The property is located, it's a three lot building located on the north side of Chambers Street and the south side of Reed Street between Broadway and Church Street. The applicant is proposing to legalize replacement storefront infill. This was a storefront that was removed a couple of years ago. And these are the existing conditions now is the Hummus and Petea space. And this is what it looks like today. And the architect Daniel O'Connor is here to discuss this proposal.
So it's, okay, from this one?
Yes.
So I've been here a long time. You're probably all familiar with this space because it's literally down the block. Years ago, we had first worked on this space when it was Carl's State. And we worked closely with Landmarks to recreate the bulkhead the way it was original in historic pictures with the black and white masonry under the window. The new client, the new tenant decided that that portion of masonry wasn't necessary to put in his storefront and glaze the whole thing, obviously without permission of Landmarks. The signage there is, that you see in the storefront, is temporary. What we're proposing is the proper sign set back from the glass, so that would be removed. And I guess, let me see here what we have. So that would be the new sign proposed as per your guidelines. We gathered, the county gathered a few pictures of how the other stores are along the Reed Street portion. We actually worked on the restaurant on the other side on, what is it?
Well, that's Reed.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're working on Chambers Street and this is Reed Street, I'm sorry. So we were, we presented the other restaurant back to back with Hummus and Petea and we followed the guidelines in that case. So while on Reed Street, we see, we see the building has maintained a bulkhead and the masonry portion. Most of the stores on the Chambers Street have not. So that's where, I guess, we would like to legalize the glazing as it is now. The portion of masonry that was removed is a minimum portion under the glass here. And we can see that as it was before, which would be this, this is pretty much the masonry that's been removed. Okay, what else do they want to add?
I think what might be maybe a little confusing is that this, so this was the infill that was removed to install the Carl's State illegally. So this came to hearing to legalize this infill. And now they're back to remove the illegal, the approved illegal infill and now they're back to approve what's there now, again, in kind of the same spirit of legalizing replacement info with that permits.
So what was removed between Carl's and now was not original to the building?
It wasn't original, but it was built in the spirit of, let's say, in coordination with Landmarks. With basically, it's a black and white banding of the existing building. So it was just basically two feet of flat brick.
There was brick here at one point.
This porch where the bicycle is, this is like tiny.
Which was the new, the replacement infill.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the architect? All right, are there any speakers on the site? Any speakers? No speakers. Community Board One recommends, are you here to speak? Okay, no, that's fine. Community Board One recommends approval as long as there's no additional signage to be added. If there are no other questions, we can close the hearing. All right, comments?
So basically, we're, this is, we might as well be back at Carl's Burger point in time because this is just de novo, right? When there's no destruction of anything that was original. Questions only whether we would approve this at all, just as if it was done back with Carl's Burger, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's right. I mean, as in terms of legalization.
Yeah, right.
Yes. All right, well, I can go ahead and say my comments. Okay, so I think this storefront is very small as compared to some of the storefronts along Chambers Street. And I think Chambers Street is quite different block from other places in Tribeca where you see much more of the traditional fabric and the bulkheads. Just by some of the photographs, it seems that there are already other storefronts which do not have the bulkhead. So I think within this frontage, it's not very wide and I think we see other storefronts without bulkhead, so I think it's okay to legalize this. I think I could find it appropriate.
Yes, I agree.
Is there any concerns? Okay. Want to go ahead?
Sure.
Okay.
In a matter of 79 Chambers Street, 5963 Reed Street, the Tribeca South Historic District, the applications to legalize storefront infill installed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the style, scale, materials and details of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca South Historic District and I recommend approval, finding that the replacement of the storefront infill did not cause the removal of significant historic fabric, that the removal of the existing signage at the display window and transom and exposed conduit at the metal-clad pier will eliminate excessive signage and unsympathetic alterations that detract from significant architectural features of the building without causing the removal of any historic fabric. That the existing aluminum and glass infill consisting of full height display window, door and transom is consistent with the configuration and materials of other contemporary storefront infill found on the streetscape. That most of the storefronts on Chambers Street have been replaced with modern infill and therefore the historic fabric remains, sorry, and therefore, sorry, the existing storefront infill is in keeping with the character of the busy commercial thoroughfare where little historic fabric remains at the ground floor. And that the work does not detract from a building or the Tribeca South Historic District.
Second, Alvin Paver?
Aye.
New post? Application's approved.
Next is item number two, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, document number 17-5795, 31 Charlton Street in the Charlton King Bandam Historic District, Block 519, Lot 61, Federal House, Style House built in 1826. The application is to modify masonry openings and the front areaway, construct a rear addition and excavate the rear yard.
Good morning, Commissioner Sadiq, Preservation Staff. The application is for work at 31 Charlton Street to secure a three-story federal style townhouse located in the middle of the block on the north side of Charlton Street, between 6 Ave and 26th Street in the Charlton King Bandam Circus. So there are several parts of this application. I'm going to go through them quickly. The first is to construct a full height, rear yard addition and excavate the rear yard to create a multi-level tiered yard. The second part of this proposal is to modify the openings here on the front facade at the first floor basement levels by moving them down to align with this neighbor here at 31 Charlton Street. The third part of the application is include lowering the stoop and modify or replacing the existing railing in kind which will be necessary to accommodate the lowering of the front entrance. And finally, the proposal includes the excavation of the front areaways. The architect is here to talk about this in detail.
Good morning. My name is Peter Kelson, Senior Principal of Span Architecture. Again, our project is at 31 Charlton Street. We actually had the pleasure of working on 33 Charlton a number of years ago. Again, the overview, while I was starting you through, since you know. The block plan shows the interior yard donut. This hatched area is our proposed extension right here. You can see that it's aligned with 33 Charlton, which is our direct neighbor. In this zoomed in area, you can see the extension coming out to meet our neighbor 33 Charlton. Our neighbor to the east also has a large rooftop addition, which you'll see in a second. Also, the rear yard has sunken areaways that are noted in the dashed lines that you'll see in a minute. This is the context of those backs, right? So you can see the white facade is ours at 31. You can see it's set way back relative to our neighbors. And of course, the extension that we're proposing would bring us in alignment to 33 Charlton, which you see on the third photo from the left. So the new work would include a basement and a first story addition. You can see the existing on the left and the proposed on the right, as well as a second and third floor extension to meet the neighbor. The materials would match 33, which are brick, precast limestone, lintels and sills, and then a new black and steel and glass window system. You can also see the areaway elevations that are noted in the plan diagram up on the upper right, as well as, that are noted in the section. Again, existing condition, the proposed condition. Just a little detail about the existing condition, which I think you can see in this photo, there are kind of no notable historic details of significance in our view. This is a view looking down at those areaways. You can see, again, we have this, we're proposing a kind of modification of the existing areaway to align it with the 33 Charlton areaway. You can see that there are areaways both at 35, 33 and 29, so we're kind of in keeping with the, with the kind of irrigation of the rear yard in the back. I think this is a helpful drawing. You can see the isometric, we are showing 33 and 29, just to establish the context of kind of the encroachment on the donut that we're proposing. You can see that we're literally in line with 33 to our west. This is the existing section. We were just, we're showing this to show the modification of that rear yard. Here's the proposed. That red line shows you the existing condition. Again, I know I've said this a lot, but this is completely a kind of carbon copy, if you will, of 33 Charlton in terms of the bulk and the extension and the language of the facade. The rooftop equipment, mechanical equipment, you can see, we're not proposing a stair bulkhead on the roof, I should point out, nor is there an elevator bulkhead, so we simply would have a Bilco hatch and a skylight that would allow access. So that's the back, so the front. You can see on the left, this is the existing condition of the front facade and then the proposed. It's worth pointing out that the overall modification that 31 is to align the floor place with 33. The idea is that the units are going to be joined in the future. So the goal is to, kind of, while we're undertaking the renovation of the structure now, to kind of future proof that, which is really what has led to a number of the requests that we're making today. You can see here that, obviously, this, and you know this, but the land was a large country estate and in 1817 it was subdivided into lots for future development. So really, these are houses that were done by local builders, they're not really kind of architect-designed structures. It's a kind of, it's a completely charming block, it's got a lively, kind of dissonant array of kind of styles. You'll see that the, the original houses, a number of them burnt down, I think there were six of them that were replaced with kind of Greek Revival later, which you'll see in a second. So here is the block in kind of all its glory with the photos of the facades above. In researching our block, 31 is in a row of six federal-style houses which have a range of detailing scales and proportions within the federal style. And then, again, I mentioned through our research that we've discovered a few replacements of these federal houses with these Greek Revival that were built in the 1840s. So I think this drawing, this drawing I find very interesting. This is a drawing that kind of shows the proportioning systems, if you will, in six inch increments. And you can see that it's, there's a high degree of variation among the facades, particularly in the six minutes that we're talking about. So the detailing and proportioning really is, you know, highly varied. You can see, I guess, what you're going to be most interested in is this, which is really to align this course of windows, or I should say, this row of windows with our neighbor 33 to accommodate the fact that we're lowering, that the floors are getting restacked. This is the existing relationship. We also have mentioned that we, as we're going to be excavating the basement, that we will be lowering the areaway to match that. So you can see, 33 has already been lowered, this is 31. This is what we would like 31 to be, which again is kind of a copy, a mirror of its doppelganger at 33. I should also say, 33, when we did the work, we did pull off the wall and we do know that these two were built at the same time. You can see that they share, there's a heavy timber frame, believe it or not, there's another party wall that holds them up. So we do know that they, that they were constructed at the, at the same time, just kind of forensically. These are details on the facade. You can see here's 33, which was restored with a brownstone, sills and lintels. 31 currently has pressed metal lintels that were probably added at some point before the tax photo was taken. You'll see that clearly in a minute. You can see the tabs kind of sticking out from the sides of the lintel, so the, oh, no. So the idea would be to pull those off and restore them. They would be brought back to their original detail and proportion, which again is in keeping with 33. Oh, I should say, I mean, obviously, there's a great, there's a lot of deterioration on this facade. Plan of the areaway in terms of the existing and the proposed. You can see we have a kind of larger one upstairs, so we're accommodating that by running it to the west, slightly further to the, to the west. There is no, we would be restoring the metalwork. Some of the works, the metalwork would be, where it can be, would be put back. And then, obviously, we would match the metalwork at the railing, which is being modified or is being proposed to be modified at the stoop at 31. This is the photo, photos of the base, so you can see, we would also be proposing a brownstone base similar to the 33 Charlton. And then, there's a range. Again, there isn't kind of a dominating series of regulating systems that tie these facades together and these details kind of show the kind of, you know, kind of charming misalignment, if you will, of these kind of various conditions across the block. And then, these are, these are plans. I'm not sure if you're interested in seeing the kind of interior conditions. I think, I appreciate your time. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Yes, Kim?
So the two buildings are going to work together or be joined together eventually?
Yes.
That's why it's happening?
Yes. And then simply, and we're not, the upper stories, in fact, we're leaving. It's really only where we run into problems at the basement level and the first floor where windows essentially colliding with kind of flooring systems that were requesting modifications to be made. The other thing, you know, and I did not say this and you have this in front of you, obviously, in lowering the, you will give me one second. So you can see here, this is, that souffle is the existing window and then we're dropping it down. We have actually found, the brick in the rear facade actually is the same brick. We've been able to obtain a sample, we've had it cleaned, and we do have, you have photos in front of you, I'm sorry they're not in the presentation, but we do have a, we have a very, very good match for that bulkhead brick. So we actually have historic brick that we can, you know, repurpose and reconstructing this.
I still want to hear your side.
This is, the transom would be restored and replaced, or I should say, restored and put back. The door would be, would be restored to the original condition.
Okay, are there other questions, Kim? Any other questions? All right, why don't you take testimony? We may have questions after that. Kristeva Kup?
Kristeva Kup, Fellow Society for the Architecture of the City. This is one of the last federal houses in the historic district to retain its original configuration. In 1966, when the district was designated, this north side of Charlton Street was called out, and I quote, "Charlton Street on its north side retains what is probably the longest row of federal and early Greek Revival houses in the city. Such continuity of period and such an excellent state of preservation is not known to exist anywhere else." The history, the houses were originally developed simultaneously by John Jacob Astor on the estate he acquired from Aaron Burr, explains the continuity. But that continuity, since 1966, is becoming more and more of a surface thing. Alterations are produced in street that resembles a film set in a backlot of an old Hollywood studio where whole blocks of street fronts were constructed. Behind the facades, there was nothing. Cutting through the conventions and precedents that surround the approval process, let's admit that this house will be almost entirely demolished. The whole interior, the floor levels, the stairs, the layout, the depth, the background, the roof. It would be nice to think that at least the facade is to be preserved, but no, that too is proposed to be altered. The diagram of the existing floor plan shows the characteristic federal layout, a double cube tower with columns, transparent, open, airy, daylighted from front and back. Montgomery Skyler, Architectural Record, 1899, a small city house in New York, described that layout as a factor in creating what he called "the decorum of these small plain federal dwellings." He called them "the most respectable and artistic pattern of habitation New York has ever known." The loss of this is, as the loss is, irreplaceable. And I believe if you check the designation for the number of houses that burned and smaller than the applicant said, I would always trust my memory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Robb Saig?
Good morning, Commissioners Barbra Z of the Historic District Council. It seems clear that there is an attempt here to turn this very old building into something it's not by destroying all but the front facade, and even that would not be spared entirely in this proposal. The adjustment of the interior floor heights, which we now understand is to join these two houses together, a trend that is extremely disturbing, would mean altering the placement of the windows, leaving the front facade with something akin to bad and unnecessary plastic surgery. Further, the very window levels on the block provide no evidence that this building needs any adjustment to fit in. They were built at the same time, but they were never meant to be doppelgangers. Concerning the rest of the house, it seems that the unfortunate alterations to the building's neighbors on either side are being used as justification or precedent for its proposed treatment, when this building should instead be spared the same fate. HDC asks that at last, that at least the top floor of the rear be preserved to keep some record of the original configuration and that any excavation be undertaken with utmost care for the fragility of this row. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Community Board Two recommends approval of this application. All right, do you have, are there any questions for the applicant? Well, I just have one question, because you've talked about connecting the two buildings, but none of your plans actually show that.
Currently, currently, the application is for the renovation of this, so it is, 31 will still remain a single family home for the moment in its original configuration. The goal, as it is the same owner, is to eventually do it. So the idea being that we would, because we have to review the structural work, that we simply would align the floor plates now so that we're not essentially coming back and redoing that again in the future. So, but so currently, this is, 31 is a standalone, you know, application. So I understand how that kind of future-proofing may or may not kind of, you know, weigh into your considerations. But again, just to...
Well, it seems that it's somewhat speculative, but for something that's sometime in the future and you don't know what's going to happen, you're actually proposing, it seems like a significant change to the facade, which otherwise would not be necessary.
I guess the only thing I would say is that, again, when looking at a kind of a systematic series of regulating lines across the block, in our view, there is none, that kind of dominant kind of logic, if you will, of proportioning systems is not found. So I think what we're hoping you will agree with is that we are neither, we are not making a condition worse, we're exacerbating something that doesn't already exist. We're, I think we're kind of participating in what's already a fairly lively assemblage of building formations, so.
Exactly. And you mentioned, you called it a charming misalignment. And the condition is misalignment on the street. And so the making it same or monolithic is, I think, the problem. Why regularize a block that's, whose, where the quality and the difference and the special character is one of, you know, slight differences? And I would, and I mean, just on a, you know, I would think that it would be most interesting, in the eventuality of the bringing of these two buildings together and single ownership and residence, it would be interesting to actually work with something that is slightly different, to live in something where the two facades are, remember a kind of their dissimilarity.
Well, I will, if I can point out there, we are, the only changes that we are proposing are the lowering of those windows. The cornices are very different, we're not proposing, bringing them in alignment, if you will, stylistically. All the metalwork is different, we're not proposing changing that. So we don't want a kind of soulless, kind of, soulless, we don't have carbon copy buildings, we're not going to try to make them that. If you see on the second and third floors, we're not proposing any changes to those windows, which still misalign. It really is kind of the pragmatic issue that we have, that's running the desire to align the windows on the, on the ground floor. And we're talking about something that's, I think it's nine and three-quarter inches, we're, you know, it's really, it's very, very close as it is, so it's not that, it's a, it's a near miss, if you will. So I think that the change, from my perspective, is not one that is going to deleteriously affect the overall aesthetic impact of that row of houses, but obviously, I leave that to you.
Daniel?
Yeah, you made reference to them being paired, but they're, they're not really a pair originally, right? Even though the other building has undergone some, some changes.
They were built at the same time. There's a, there's a heavy timber frame.
I understand.
But yes, they're not, they're not a pair. They were built...
They were built at the same time, but not intended to be a pair. Thank you.
All right, are there other questions? Yes, Michael?
My tendency is to agree with Adi on this one, that the characterization of the difference of all these facades is what makes this part of the district for which it was designated. And I personally don't consider the implied for alterations to be insignificant, more appropriate. At such time that the joining of these two buildings occurs, I would suggest that the applicants then work with staff to work out a way to make the floor plates align properly somehow on the interior without affecting the facade of this building. I'm okay with, I'm moderately okay with what's going on in the rear of the building and I have less of an issue with the top windows, which we typically require to be left in situ, only because the two bump outs on the flanking buildings conceal them anyway at this point. So I'm less disturbed by the rear, but I think the work on the front is inappropriate.
Okay, do we have any more questions for the applicant? Okay, so we can close the hearing?
No.
And we can move to comments. So thank you, Michael, for your comment on that and others. others?
Yeah, I agree with Adi and Michael, I think this is, you know, and the testimony, it's a, you know, a remarkable row still, and we should try to preserve what we, particularly it's a federal building, and having this modification to make it look like its supposed twin, which isn't this twin, is just inappropriate.
Okay.
I can go on with most of your modifications.
Okay, so why don't we recommend approval of the scope of work at the rear, and in terms of the scope of work in the front, we ask them to, we can just omit that, and they can work with staff to align the floors, and once you enter in the building, then they can find ways to align the floors and then connect to the adjacent building. Okay, good. John?
In the matter of docket number 17-579531 Charlton Street in the Charlton King Van Dam Historic District, the application is to modify masonry openings and the front areaway, construct a rear addition, and excavate the rear yard. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Charlton King Van Dam Historic District. I recommend approval with a modification, finding that none of the work at the rear will result in the loss of or damage to any significant architectural feature of the building or substantially eliminate the presence of a rear yard, that a majority of the other buildings in the block feature comparable or larger rear yard additions in terms of their projection into the rear yard and their height, therefore, the proposed full-height rear addition will not detract from adjoining properties or diminish the unity of a row, that the proposed stepped massing and design of the rear facade featuring multi-light windows framed and separated by floor level, by floor level, by brickwork cladding, will retain the scale and character of an individual house, that the proposed excavation will not extend to the rear lot line, then will provide an area for significant plantings in the rear yard, that the proposed terracing of the rear yard will be in keeping with the range of the varied terracing of the neighboring properties, that the excavation at the rear yard and beneath the front areaway and related underpinning will be done in compliance with Department of Buildings regulations under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer or registered architect to protect the building's facades and the adjacent buildings, that none of the work at the rear will be visible from a public thoroughfare, that a replacement of the bluestone at the areaway with new bluestone is warranted due to its damaged condition, and that the excavation at the areaway will not significantly affect the perceived relationship of this aspect to the house and will remain harmonious within the streetscape, which features a variety of grade levels. However, I find that the proposed shifting of the masonry openings and associated replacement of historic masonry will alter these features of the house away from their historic placement and proportions, and that the modifications will eliminate and/or disturb a significant portion of the historic fabric at and close to the typical eye level from the public thoroughfare and diminish the unified appearance of the brickwork. I therefore recommend that the alterations at the front facade be omitted, and the applicant work with staff to find a less intrusive solution to the issues of floor alignment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So application's approved.
Commissioner, this is the third item. The agenda is an application for certificate of appropriateness for Manhattan, docket number 175366, 401 Sixth Avenue, located within Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a building built in 1870 and altered in 1959. The application is to install signage and an awning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Agrostock Preservation Staff, and I present to you an application for work at 401 Sixth Avenue, which is located between Greenwich Avenue and Waverly Place in the Greenwich Village Historic District. Commissioners, please note that 401 Sixth Avenue was changed significantly in 1959 with removal of the upper three stories and the alterations of the front facade. The proposal is to install a metal sign band at the second floor and an awning above the northernmost entrance at the first floor. Margaret Kugan, a representative lieutenant, will present the proposal to you.
Hello, my name is Margaret. I'm office manager at Village Dental Medicine, located at 401 Sixth Avenue. Of my proposal, after the changes that Edward has pointed out of the building, on the top is 2007 Big Bang Yoga. When we took over, or when we leased, when we rented the space, the owner advised us to just re-posture the signs and the awning that was there, so we did, but we later found out that it was never approved by Landmark and Preservations. So of course, we removed the sign and awning, the violation has been removed, and then the one on the bottom is Caldwell Banker. When he installed his sign on the second floor, there was a hole that was left there. This is the current state of the building, so on the top, it was a hole that was left there from Caldwell Banker when he installed the sign, which was never replaced, which was never fixed. The bottom is the entrance of the building where we proposed the awning, and as you can see, everything has already been removed. This is a little bit about our neighborhood. On the top is to your left, in front of the, of the office to your left, which is quite commercial, and to your right, a few blocks more down, it's a very commercial area, lots of signage, and this is right in front of us, there's Staples, that also has a second floor spigot. This is the awning that we proposed on the first, on the entrance to the second floor, which is slightly different from the one that we used to have. This one will be all in one color, no openings on the side, and only the letters on the four-inch skirt in the front. And this one would be the sign, very similar to the one that we used to have, but also slightly smaller, so that this one can only cover the hole that I showed was on the second floor. These are other landmark buildings around my neighborhood. This is Vadaswak, as you can see, they have some signage on the second floor, and Staples, which is directly in front of our office.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any speakers? Okay, sorry, excuse me, are there any speakers? No speakers, community board recommends approval. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. Right, I believe that from the first iteration, the sign has actually become smaller, so I think if you look at your notes, the staff recommends it's big, smaller, but they've already done that. Are there any concerns with the signage and awning? Okay, good, so in that case, we can move to decision. Diana?
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness for Manhattan, docket 17-5366, 401 Sixth Avenue, Greenwich Village Historic District, application is to install signage and an awning. I recommend approval, finding that the original building has been altered significantly, therefore, no historic or architectural features will be obscured by the signage and awning, that there is a precedent for large-scale signage at the second floor of the building, that the proposed canvas awning is well-scaled to the entrance it serves, and that Sixth Avenue is a commercial thoroughfare, and that the second-floor sign and awning will be compatible with its context and will not detract from the streetscape.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So application's approved.
Okay, Commissioner, the next item on the agenda is item four, an application for certificate of appropriateness for Manhattan, docket number 175659, 24 Fifth Avenue, located within Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Spanish Renaissance-style apartment built and designed by Emery Roth and built in 1926. The application is to install awnings, lighting, and signage.
Good morning, Commissioners, Timothy Shaw, Reservation Staff. 24 Fifth Avenue is located at the northwest corner of Fifth Avenue, a west tent street within the Greenwich Village Historic District. The application is for the installation of awnings at the northern portion of the storefront, this, or the northern entrances at the base of the building. In 2013, Commission approved the removal of an existing sidewalk café and the installation of new infill at these openings, and new awnings at a restaurant space at the southern portion of the building. The applicant returned in 2014 at a public meeting with an application which the Commission approved for large retractable awnings at this height, and the Commission also approved light fixtures and the signage at that restaurant. That was approved based on the historic documentation of the height of the awnings retractable at the restaurant space that was previously at this hotel. The application for you today is for three new awnings for new space, not restaurant space, the northern portion of the building. The awnings have closed sides and loose skirts with signage at the ends of the skirts at the southern awning and the northern awning. The reason this doesn't meet the rules is due to the height of the awnings, which per the rules would need to be within the opening or just above the opening to meet code, and also because of the closed sides on a non-retractable awning. The application is also for the installation of two light fixtures between the openings similar to what was installed at the restaurant, as well as pin-mounted metal sign, metal lettering sign, similar to what was approved at the restaurant. Elizabeth Bell, the architect, will present the...
The design for the awning is based on sheltering the existing entrances to the inner space and the ground porch and forbs. When designing, we took into consideration the existing awning already installed. Because of the outswing of the doors, we were not able to install these awnings within the opening. It would have prevented the door from fully opening. As such, when designing it, we aligned with the existing awning that was already installed. In addition, we have a few sides that project out minimally, and the idea is to give a finished end to each of the individual awnings, and also install the signage on the sides. In addition, the signage is in line with what was previously approved in the restaurant, and the sponges are the same specification mounted at the same height.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. The speaker is on the side, and Barbara Zay.
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. HDC finds that the proposed awnings, which neither match the ones on the other side of the entrance nor the historic awnings found on this building, only emphasize the asymmetry of the ground floor ensemble. Considering that the proposed awnings do not serve a function other than to display the business name, HDC finds that signage along with the proposed lanterns would be preferable. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Excuse me. Community Board Two recommends denial, noting that the awnings are without historical reference and detract from the symmetry. All right, any other questions for the applicant? We can close the hearing. Comments? Yes. You'd like to say something? Yes.
My name is Gary Prost, I'm the executive facilities director for Forbes Media, and this is a facility that we recently had installed at 24 Fifth Avenue. It's a meeting and conference space for Forbes Media, and branding is something that's very important to our corporation, and that is something that we're looking for on the sides of both of the awnings to display that name, and that's the reason why we, actually two reasons, one is for the display of the name on the side, to differentiate where Forbes is versus the restaurant, because the facade is so similar, in addition to the fact that our address is 24 Fifth Avenue, Claudette's address is 24 Fifth Avenue. Residents in the building at 24 Fifth Avenue, there's a physician's office on the first floor, that's 24 Fifth Avenue. So we're really trying to designate the spaces being very different from Claudette's on the other side, and the awnings protrudes out just a small amount to cover the doors itself, doesn't make sense to be retractable from that standpoint, because it's such a small dimension. So again, the reason for us looking for this type of awning is really for the branding of Forbes, so it can be seen as you walk down Fifth or walk up Fifth, to see that that's the location. Any questions for me on that?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Simon.
Can we close the hearing? All right, comments? Yes.
I think there can be such a thing as overbranding, and in fact, in this case, I'm okay with the awning itself. I don't think that the Forbes on the front of the middle awning is necessary, because there's already branding on the building itself. I think on the two ends, it's fine. I don't think it's necessary on the awning.
Okay, other comments? I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think just the branding or the name at the front is very modest, and I didn't see it as being excessive. If not on all three, it's just on one, but in fact, I think the side branding is a little problematic, but I actually think it's, even as it is, I think it's fine. Other comments?
Yeah, I think that the canopy should be like the historic canopy image, which is symmetrical along the entry to the building, and whether retractable or not should resemble the one on Claudette's.
Okay, other comments? Yes.
I agree with Adi, I think it should be one, it should be more symmetrical, and it should be a larger canopy with the individual, because what's historical there, even though it's historically matched, it's kind of unbalanced. How they break it up on one side and have it much more to get around the...
Okay. Right, I know, I just, right, but I think, you know, the idea of symmetry, if you have, this is going to be a black awning, and if it's as big as the other one, I think it's just much more prominent, and so then it's a question of, well, let's go back to a striped awning, and that's the two different entities, and I, I don't know, I think that if the, first of all, the existing awning, I know that may be more historically accurate, but it is much larger, and, okay, other comments? Yes.
I actually think I prefer the smaller individual awnings, because I think they're very, they're much more modest and not calling a lot of attention to the thing, and to me, awnings, you know, awnings speak to a use and a purpose. Originally, the awnings were there in the building for a purpose, and the purpose wasn't probably something like this. So to me, there is a little more, shall we say, flexibility that we could exercise here, because the awning isn't serving the purpose that it did necessarily historically exactly, so I don't see the need to have this same large awning on this...
Well, the other one has like outdoor seating in this...
But what is, the purpose that this awning is serving is signage, and so if it's signage is the issue, then testimony proposed that, a sign, but it's an awning.
But I don't want to see a big awning, is my perspective on this thing. I understand Adi.
All right, let me ask, who all are okay with just, before we get to the signage, who all are okay with just the canopies as is?
I'm not here, okay, but we don't have the votes.
Okay, not the signage, but just the canopies. Michael, are you okay with just the canopies? I mean, leading inside the...
I'm okay with the canopies and not okay with the signage.
Okay, so if we go with Michael's recommendation, which is, we have the canopies as is, but the signage in the front can just be the one at the lower end, but not the one in the middle, then you'd be fine with it, right? Would the other commissioners be fine with that? So you can have the side signage, wouldn't have the signage in the middle canopy... So you can have the side signage, wouldn't have the signage in the middle canopy on top, but you'd have the signage in the front on the side like it shows for Claudette. Seems reasonable? Okay, good, let's go with that then. Kim?
In the matter of 24 Fifth Avenue, Greenwich Village Historic District, a Spanish Renaissance style apartment building designed by Emory Roth and built in 1926, application is to install awnings, lighting, and signage. I recommend approval, finding that the location of the new awnings will match the height of large awnings found in historic photographs, as well as the location of the commission-approved awnings at the southern portion of the facade, and that their presence will not detract from any significant architectural features of the building or streetscape. That the width of the awnings will align with the exterior width of the masonry openings below, and that their size and shape will be kept, will be in keeping with typical awnings at storefronts found elsewhere within the historic district. That while the awnings would be fixed with side panels containing signage, their loose skirts and matte canvases, canvas cladding will recall the historic retractable awnings. That the light fixtures located between the awning, the storefront openings, and the pin-mounted metal signs will not detract from any significant architectural features of the building or streetscape, and will match the design of the previously approved lighting and signage at the southern portion of the facade. And that the work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of the building or the streetscape.
Are we keeping the signage in the middle canopy?
And that the signage in the middle awning will be omitted.
Yes. My second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, applications approved.
Commissioner's item five, it's an application for certificate of appropriateness of Manhattan, document number 180804. This is 100 West 12th Street, located within the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is an apartment house designed by Horace Ginsburg and Associates and built in 1956. The application is to replace entrance infill and modify a ramp in the evening.
Good morning, Commissioners, I am Public Preservation Staff. This application is for modifications at 100 West Paul Street, which is located on the southwest corner of West Paul Street and Sixth Avenue. You can see it's a large apartment building in the Greenwich Village Historic District. So the application is for modifications to this entrance here on West Paul Street. I'm going to go through them really quickly, because the applicant is going to go through them in detail. So the modifications include widening a concrete ramp, replacing the existing metal picket railings and curving with new railings and no curving, replacing concrete paraging and masonry veneer at the surrounding brickwork, patching the adjacent floors, replating the westernmost wall here with block and steel metal cladding, replacing the infill with frameless glass infill, and replacing the existing canopy with a newer, smaller canopy featuring integrated light fixtures within the entrance closest to the doors. And so the architect is here to talk about this in detail.
Hello, my name is Nick O'Rich, and I'm with architect Beau Cradyma. Okay, so this is the existing position, and the scope of work is to create the new entrance and canopy for the building. Here is the demolition plan. And so what we're doing is we're going to remove and replace the existing canopy, the brazier, the cladding around the infill, and then also we're going to remove existing concrete cladding and replace that with brick to match the existing. And here are the proposed elevations and plan. And sections. Here we have the existing canopy and the existing cladding and the proposed. And so here is a rendering of the proposed design. And then to give you two more details, so the first element to look at is the ramp that we're going to remove and replace. What we're going to do is replace that with a wider ramp and a handle that's more integrated into the design. And we're going to remove curbs that are on either side of the road. The next element is to replace the existing concrete cladding with brick to match the existing. So you can see that here, and also here around the entrance. The next element is the canopy, and that will be removed and replaced with a new blackened canvas canopy, and the exit will align with the existing conditions. So here's a detailed rendering of that. Some section details. And then lastly, is the infill or the cladding material. Right now, it is black marble, and we propose to replace that with a black and steel, something more minimal, and to replace the entrance step with a black and porcelain tile. So here again is the rendering, and here are some material samples. So, are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Thank you. Are there any speakers on the side? Any speakers? Community Board Two recommends approval. All right, if there are no questions, we can close the hearing. Any comments?
What Mark Crane would think of, his building with his name on it. I think that's relevant.
That's relevant.
Jokes on who?
Well, I think, you know, it's a 1950's building, and I love the canopy that they have right now, so I think it's actually very simple and...
We just saw an application to mess with the grocery store on the corner a few months ago. Right, they're going to add a window on the corner, and there's a, it's like a shop well or something, a shop right in it, and they're changing that out and whatever. Building's getting massive upgrade.
All right, so we're okay with this? Any concerns?
The other thing I would say is the staff should just check to make sure the brick is a pretty good match, because that would make their efforts look pretty sad. Just check out the brick match with the staff.
All right, okay. All right, Kim?
Mike.
Oh, Michael, sorry. Michael.
Guardian, 24 Fifth Avenue, Greenwich Village Historic District. The application is to install awnings, lighting, and signage. I recommend approval, noting that the style, scale, materials, and details of the building are among the features which contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the district. I find that the location of the new awnings will match the height of large awnings found in historic photographs, as well as the location of the commission-approved awnings at the southern portion of the facade, and that their presence will not detract from any significant architectural features of the building or streetscape. That the width of the awning, awning, oh wait a minute, I'm on the wrong building, no wonder. It's like, gosh, did that really contribute to the value of the district? All right, 100 West 12th Street.
Yes.
There we go. Yeah, I still recommend approval, finding that none of the work will result in the loss or damage to any saving features of the building or site, that direct linear and block forms and simple detailing of the installations or a call in a contemporary manner. The simple block forms and detailing of the building's design further helping to unify the installations with the building without drawing undue attention to the work, that the materials of the installation, including brickwork, veneo, black and steel cladding, tile and concrete paving, black and steel railings, clear glass infill, and their finishes will be harmonious with the building's original material and finished palettes. That the presence and placement of the proposed canopy will help reinforce the prominence of the primary entrance and be in keeping a typical use of canopies at apartment buildings of this size and age. That the size of the proposed canopy will well scale to the entrance, that the proposed ramp will provide barrier-free access to this main entrance, and be simply designed and well-integrated into the composition of the entrance in terms of placement. That the metal address numbers and two light fixtures at the underside of the canopy will be small in size and simply detailed, helping in to remain a discreet presence, and that these alterations at a limited central portion of the northern facade will be perceived primarily within the context of this wide, modern building, and will not detract from neighboring rowhouses, streetscape, or historic district.
Some in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? applications approved.
Commissioner's next item is item number six, an application for certificate of appropriateness of Manhattan, document number 178241. This is 66 Bedford Street, located within the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a federal-style house built in 1821, and the application is to construct a rear addition, alter the entry, and construct a stoop.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Merry Service Preservation Department Staff. 66 Bedford Street is one of three federal-style houses located on the east side of Bedford Street between Commerce Street and Mortals Street, along with its neighbors at numbers 64 and 68. The building's entry was modified prior to its historic tax photograph, which shows a low entry with a fan light. The same tax photograph shows a stoop and recessed entryway at neighboring 64 Bedford Street. This application is to modify the entry and construct a stoop to match the entry at 64 Bedford Street, and to construct a rear yard addition that is minimally visible from Seventh Avenue South. Victor Schwartz will present the proposal.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Victor Schwartz, and I'm the architect. So as Mary said, we are seeking to modify the existing entrance at number... This is the current entrance dating prior to 1940. We'd like to go back to what we think is more original entrance, the same as 64 and 68, which is a recessed entrance with a small stoop. That's the changes for the front of the building. The existing lintel is there, it's not going to be changed. The modification to the brickwork is really just to patch and repair the arch that somebody inbuilt it's at one point. I don't know when. The other portion of the application is an extension at the rear yard. We currently have a small deck, about 57 square feet, in the backyard, and we'd like to enclose that and put a terrace above it. The view from across Seventh Avenue, there's a vegetated wall, which you can barely see, but it is visible from the public way. These are views of number 64, which has an approved extension dating back, I think, early 2000's. This is the rear yard of number 66, and this is 66 with the deck that's there now. What I'd like to do is really just enclose this with doors and windows, fenestration not unlike, what is that, 64? And put a railing on a deck that's accessible from, this is currently the landing between the first and second floor, we'd like to put a deck at that level. This is the plan, this is the existing, this is the new, near extension is actually going to be doors between the two buildings. So they're under, they're under similar ownership. So I asked the building to put two, two and a half hour rated doors, basically like a hotel, that they could communicate back and forth. And they're okay with that. This is the existing section with the existing fenestration, which is just three glazed doors. This is the proposed extension with a deck above. The doors are basically mostly glass. These are, this is a fixed window with double hones at either side and a small door. The front, that's the existing front, this is number 66, 64 and 68. This is basically what we're seeking to do on the front. Similar to the existing back and the proposed back. This is the railing, that's at number six, and the extension at number 66, we're just going to replicate that, basically in kind. Some details of the doors and windows. And the front entrance, these are all photographs of number 64 that I'd like to replicate.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any speakers on the side? No speakers, Community Board Two recommends approval. If there are no questions, we can close the hearing. Any comments? Yes.
I would request that when you, this poor building has been under some duress. I can see grinder marks on the front facade brick where they've cut all the fire skin off, creating a performance problem, and they've repointed 19th century brick with Portland cement mortar, applied in the Stevie Wonder manner. I would recommend, please, that when you repoint the new bricks, it be done so that the mortar does not cover the arises of the brick. You know how to do it. You know how to do it.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
This is probably 20 years ago.
This is very sad, yeah.
They're doing better work these days.
Okay, work with staff and make sure it gets done.
All right, other comments?
I'll just follow up, though. I do want to make sure we thank them for actually restoring the entrance rather than bastardizing it further. The idea of going back to match the one that was there is fantastic, so thank you.
Okay, great. Yes?
Yeah, I agree with John, and it's modest, and actually also the fact they're still keeping the eccentric window configuration, fenestration in the back is, you know, I think it's kind of charming, that it's nice that they're not, they're doing, keeping so much of the existing, even if that may not be historic, it's kind of a charming feature.
Okay, great. All right, in that case, we can move to decision. Michael?
In the matter of 100 West, I'm sorry, in the matter of 66 Bedford Street, the Greenwich Village Historic District, an application, construct a rear yard, alter the entry, and construct a stoop. Noting, well, 66 Bedford is one of three federal-style houses with 64 and 68, and the building's scale, style, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architecture and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. Further noting that Bedford Street has been widened, resulting in a narrow sidewalk that cannot accommodate full stoops. And finally noting that the entry doorway was modified inward and a fan light installed prior to the historic tax photograph. I recommend approval, and thanks to the applicant, that the rear addition and deck with new iron railings above will only be minimally visible from Seventh Avenue South due to the presence of an existing brick garden wall and vegetation at the sidewalk, and only seen in context with rear yard additions. The rear of the building has no significant architectural features that will be lost or damaged by the construction of the proposed rear yard addition. That the proposed rear yard addition is modest in scale and will not overwhelm the scale of the building. That the proposed rear yard addition is in keeping with the depth and height of other rear yard additions found with central green space. That the simple design will harmonize with the rear facade. That the windows to be removed in conjunction with the construction of the addition are not special windows. That the modified masonry opening for access to the new deck will maintain the same general shape as the existing opening. That the proposed removal of entry door and fan light and the installation of a recessed entry and stoop will not result in the loss of any significant architectural features. That the design and design of the proposed stoop and entryway featuring brownstone-covered cement steps, wrought iron handrails, a recessed entry and molding profiles, and panelled wood door with molding profiles and transom will replicate the historic features of its neighbor at number 64 Bedford Street. That the design of the stoop is consistent with other approved stoops along Bedford Street. That while the recessed entry and stoop configuration typical of this block may have been a result of a street widening in the early 20th century and does not reflect the original stoop conditions of this building, the reconstr- century and does not reflect the original stoop conditions of this building, the reconstruction of the stoop will return a significant missing feature to the facade and will help bring the facade closer to its original appearance, and the proposed work will enhance the special character, architecture, and historic character of the buildings and the streetscape.
Second?
All in favor? Any opposed? Applications approved.
Commissioner, there's the next item, it's item number seven on the agenda. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, DACA number sixteen zero-five-two-five. This is twenty-six West Eleventh Street, located within Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style townhouse built in eighteen forty-four, forty-five. The application is to modify the front entrance.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor's Service, Preservation Department staff. This application is for modifications at twenty-six West Eleventh Street, which is a townhouse located in the West Eleventh Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenues, on the south side of the block, in Greenwich Village Historic District. So, there are two parts to this proposal. The first is to remove this enclosed vestibule, which was installed without landmark preservation commission permits, at the primary entrance, which is at the basement level. As you can see, from the nineteen forties tax photo, the store's gift had already been removed by that time, and the basement entrance was established, this hood here, at the time of designation, which is right here, there was an existing vestibule that the current vestibule replaced. And so, this is our current vestibule that was replaced without landmark preservation commission permit. So, the second part of this proposal is to install a new surround, here. And the architect is here to discuss the proposal. Can he go?
Good morning. My name is Bill O'Sullivan, Metro Sarah's Better. And we're here to discuss our proposal for twenty-six West Eleventh Street. So, basically, what we have here is a building that is part of a series of seven Greek Revival Town Houses that were built in the eighteen hundreds. All buildings here have original stoops, and our building at this point was supposed to be within the building's history. And in the nineteen forties, you have a photograph here, historic photograph, that actually shows that it was good, and later, nineteen seventy, that it was enclosed and vestibules created. Sometime in our most recent future, a new vestibule enclosure was created and was installed. This is basically the existing conditions, what's here right now. This is the interior view of the entrance, and basically, this building here is the building that is adjacent to ours, number twenty-four, and here you can see that the original stoop is there and the brownstone framing. Now, what we're proposing to do is to basically install a precast brownstone infringement with a lintel and open it to remove the existing vestibule. These are some of our detailed sections for this, and you can see here, an existing elevation and a proposal of how this would look like in the future. Now, again, the materials are all to remain, very original to what was there. We're just installing a precast brownstone to match, and it's going to be very similar to what you can see in this photograph. Now, we tried to bring in precedents from other buildings and other surrounds from the neighborhood, and this is actually one of the examples that we found. There's another one here. You can see, is it also basement entrance? And it has a brownstone framing, and here it has brownstone surround, brownstone lintel. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Yes, Diana?
I guess the obvious. You didn't consider restoring this, or you've not at this time, considering restoring the stoop.
Yes, we didn't consider restoring that at the time, because the entrance was at the basement now, building, or the entrance, and restoring the stoop would have to alter to the entrance to the top floor.
Yes, of course. Okay, are there speakers on the side?
Barbara Sarah, the Historic District Council. HDC finds the removal of the entrance vestibule to be appropriate. However, the new brownstone infringement leaves the window above looking a bit squished. We would suggest that the applicant work with LBC staff to adjust the proportions or remove the infringement's upper piece of masonry to allow for the retention of the window sill and a bit of flat wall in between the door's cornice and the window. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the side? The Community Board Two recommends denial based on the fact that the vestibule is in violation and the design is ill-proportioned. Okay, do we have any comments? Have we got questions? Okay, so we can close the hearing and move to comments. Write comments. You want to see the elevation?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we fine with it as is? Is there any comment? Yes, Michael?
I think it's... Even though I don't necessarily agree with the choice of precedence chosen as being particularly relevant to this case, I think that... I think that in general, I'm familiar with lots of situations where this did occur, and some of them quite a bit less contextually sensitive than this one's attempting to be. My only concern is, I mean, clearly, the best result for this very lovely, relatively intact, well, townhouses would be for the stoop to be restored, and if that's not an option at this time, I just want to make sure that nothing about this design precluded that at a later time. So, I would just ask the staff to look at... Evaluate it with that in mind, and that either its width or the removal of any material would not inhibit that. The other thing is, I mean, a lot of these additions were done, many of them, not all of them, were done in materials that were maybe less solid and permanent than the proposed brownstone. Not that goodness knows for the amount of money that someone's going to pay for this, they wouldn't blanket removing this stuff, but, I don't know, maybe they should think about it in wood, painted wood instead, but, I mean, I'm okay with it as, as I just say, you know, think about it as being... I think it would, it might be a little bit less permanent and thereby less disruptive of the whole, make it look less purposeful in a way, you know, like less original. Because one of the things about the examples that you did show is that they all look like they were done later, and, I mean, this is kind of following it out to make it look like it was original. I mean, I could go with it okay as is, but maybe better in wood.
Okay. Others? All right, so I think we can go with it as is. Okay. All right. Lincoln?
In the matter of twenty-six Eleventh Street, Greenwich Village Historic District, the application is to modify the front entrance, noting that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the entrance vestibule in place at the time of designation, which was replaced without landmark preservation commission permit, was either constructed or substantially redesigned from an earlier structure in the late twentieth century and was not a significant architectural feature. That although proportions of the existing wood infill date to the early twentieth century, the infill is altered and deteriorated and does not retain significant design elements. That the design of the proposed entrance surround and infill will be consistent with a common early twentieth-century alteration to rowhouses of this state, age, and style when the stoop was removed, including replicating typical polyfloor entrance surrounds and infill, oftentimes with a more simplified design. That the cast-on surround and wood infill will be well-scaled to the building and feature materials and finishes which match or recall materials and finishes historically found houses of this style and age, and profiles and details are consistent with the design of the building. That the proposed camera and intercom install at the entrance return will be typical in terms of location and finishes to blend in with their surroundings and will not draw undue attention to themselves. That none of the proposed work will accrue the possible restoration of the polyfloor entrance or stoop in the future.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Applications approved.
Okay, Commissioner, there's the next item on the agenda. Item number eight, an application for certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, DACA number seventeen eight-eight-two-seven. This is twenty-one Bleecker Street, AKA twenty-one to twenty-three Bleecker Street, located within the Noah East Historic District. This is a pair of combined federal-style converted dwellings originally built in eighteen thirty and altered in the eighteen sixties with Italianate-style features. The application is to install storefront infill.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor's Service, Preservation Department staff. Twenty-one Bleecker Street, AKA twenty-one to twenty-three Bleecker Street, is a pair of converted dwellings located on the north side of Bleecker Street between Lafayette Street and Valerie. The building was originally constructed circa eighteen thirty as two federal-style rowhouses. The building was raised and given Italianate-style ornaments in the eighteen sixties and joined internally and used as a mission house. In the early twentieth century, the building was converted to store and offices before being converted again to cooperative apartments in the nineteen nineties. The current ground floor contains fragmentary remains of the twentieth-century storefront. This application is to remove the existing storefront infill and install new infill at the ground floor, featuring existing cast-iron features, a profiled wood trim, operable and fixed windows with transoms, and a new entry configuration. Norman Cox of Union Street Studio will present the proposal.
Well, as Mary said, the building has had quite a history, went from originally residential use to institutional use and then to commercial use, and now it is back to residential use. It's currently an interim multiple. And as you can see from the photograph, the recent photograph, that the existing facade at the ground level was quite a large, large of materials. Building is visible here in this photograph, and here in this photograph. This is an elevation view of the front of the building as it is today. You can see that there's quite a range of things going on here. There's double-honed windows here, the windows here are covered with perforated metal, there's painted plywood, there's a variety of security grills and things like that. On the inside of the building, at the facade, there is virtually no historic structure left. All of these windows are constructed sometime probably in the last fifty years. These two photographs are taken at the east side from the inside. This photograph is a picture of a sheet metal cornice above the ground floor. There are actually two layers of sheet metal there. There's an original sheet metal cornice, which probably dates from early twentieth century, and then over there is another sheet metal covering, which seems to have been put on sometime to solve leaking problems. These are the current entrance doors of the building, as a recessed entrance in the middle. And then there's a little bit of mosaic in the floor here, which refers back to its life as the Florence Mission. So, our proposal is to replace the street-level facade with a new facade composed of wood windows and wood frame, metal security grills and security gates. We will be restoring the cast iron columns, one of which is here, one in the middle, and one at the west side. This column here is actually a wood column that's built to simulate the cast iron. We'll also be replacing the cornice above these windows with a new sheet metal cornice to match the original. At the ground level, there'll be a stone sill, so that's all the windows are off the sidewalk. In general terms, what we considered in creating this design was, one, there's almost no historical fabric left of the bricks. So, there's nothing really to restore within the columns or in the cornice. Two, the building has returned to fully residential use. So, behind these windows are apartments. There are basement apartments and also first-floor apartments. And third, the street, Bleecker Street, the north side of Bleecker Street, is incredibly diverse in how the storefronts are developed, here as you can see. On the north... On the south side of Bleecker Street, there are large-scale commercial dwellings, which really are of completely different scale than the buildings on this side. So, there are a number of practical concerns as well. One, because we have basement apartments, we wanted to make those windows as large as we can. We wanted to lift those windows up off the sidewalk a little bit, give it a stone base to prevent infiltration of water from snow and rain. At the first floor, we wanted to make the windows easily accessible and not so large that they couldn't be made operable. So, these are... Many of these are operable windows here. The grills... This gate is largely symbolic, it doesn't lock, but because the entrance is recessed, it's there to dissuade people from hanging out on the steps. This is a view of what the proposed storefront would look like. I need to talk a little bit about the upper two floors of the building. Right now, we're showing it as unpainted brick. The building is currently being... There's under some restoration work on the upper two floors, and in the past couple weeks, we discovered that the brick at the third floor doesn't really match the brick at the second floor. And this is probably due to the building being raised during the nineteenth century. Other considerations for the design of the facade was, we wanted to break up the composition horizontally into smaller units, so that there was a rhythm that reflected the rhythm of the small windows and the upper floors, that's similar to the buildings on the north side of the street. Horizontally, we broke it out into three bands, so that made, you know, some reference to traditional storefront compositions, where there's a bulkhead, a show window, and a transom. The security grills are composed of rectangular steel bars. They're alternating, single bar, double bar, and the gates have a similar pattern, although the spacing widens as the height of the gate. Just to go through a couple more drawings, here's an elevation drawing of the building in context. Plan view of the existing conditions, one of the important goals of this project is to address this entrance to the basement unit right now. Now, right now, that entrance is quite substandard. As you can see from this section, this is a section of that entrance, there's insufficient head height, and the steps are much too steep. So, as part of the facade renovation, we're proposing to open that up a little bit, give them more headroom, and make the steps reasonable steps. That necessitates a kind of a curious thing, which is... That necessitates kind of a curious thing, which is, we've decided to take that one window, which is just visible in here, and sort of slope it back. In other words, we're sort of, we're hinging it at the top and letting it swing back to make the headroom for the steps that go down to that basement. This is the plans of the proposed condition. You can see that the windows fill the, along the facade. Here's the entrance to the basement unit, and here's the recessed entrance to the building, building lobby. We're proposing to replace the two doors at the back of this entrance with glass doors, similar pattern to what's there now, basically a panel door with a glass panel, and replace the entrance to this dwelling unit, which is at the side, with a solid panel door.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, I have a question. So you're calling it a storefront, but its use is not a storefront, right?
Well, I try not to call it a storefront. I try to call it a facade. It is not a storefront.
Okay. So I guess that, so my question is, it's not a storefront?
Correct.
Use. And so why not return to the, let's say, to the eighteen ninety-three mission facade?
Well, that would be a phenomenally costly effort. It's a small, co-op building with pretty limited resources. To return to this elevation would involve basically removing the cast-iron columns, putting a new brick wall. We'd have to dig an area way to provide light to the basement units, because that's what was there originally, it was a recessed area way. I think it's not really a feasible solution for the current problem. It'd be far beyond that, really, to think.
Okay, but so as a follow-up, the windows, as you're proposing them, though, are not windows to just two units, are they? I mean, are they units, are they windows, are they blind?
No, no, they're the actual windows. They are windows to three rooms.
Okay.
This is a dwelling unit.
I see.
This is a dwelling unit, and this is actually a duplex.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, they are all clear glass, operable windows, not all of them are operable, some of them are fixed. But yes, these are windows that are sorting dwelling units. Just to go back to the financial considerations, this is actually a fairly reasonably priced solution, because all the historic, you know, all the fabric, you know, the stuff that's in there now is worthless. We can pull it out. There's three cast-iron columns, there's a beam, so we're starting with a nice clean opening. And it's pretty economical to do. We've priced out the windows, these are manufactured windows, tilt-and-turn type. And it's not, how then is it expensive to make this change?
Okay. Any other questions? I'm going to be, two speakers, Barbara Z.
Barbara Z of the Historic District Council. The structure is comprised of two buildings with three distinct storefront bays, a charming and irregular ensemble. The proposed scheme would regularize the storefront, introducing heavy framing and resulting in a loss of the existing rhythm and charm. HGC finds that if the fully glazed storefront is to be retained at the base of the building, it would be better to keep the existing rhythm of multiple entrances separated by windows. This would better honor the historic storefront configuration as well as avoid issues like the awkward window proportions on the proposed scheme, where the western-bays windows are slightly narrower than those on the eastern bay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Bean-Autman.
Good morning Commissioners, Sarah Bean-Autman, Orange Village Society for Historic Preservation. GBSHP objects to the proposed changes to the front facade. Toll and Bleecker Street is set within a special section of this thoroughfare which offers an interesting cross-section of its history and development. It is surrounded by other early 19th-century houses which show similar layers of commercial alterations reflecting the evolution of this area through the late 19th and 20th centuries. The proposed ground floor alterations have no historic precedent and would erase the many layers of history found in this building's lower facade. Further, the proposed new facade is much too glassy and open. Any changes should be more restrained and make greater effort to reflect and retain historic elements of the current facade, as well as looking to the upper levels of the building for design cues. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Intervene, two recommends approval of this application. Do you have any questions for the applicant? Any questions? I hope you can close the hearing. All right, comments?
I agree with the comments about the fact that the design does squelch the leading of the buildings as two, which I think, and it does go, there is a history of them being consolidated as one in the eighteen ninety-three photo, but even they are, well, I don't know. I think that it would be a better thing if that, and I don't think it would be very difficult to achieve, and maybe it could be done at staff level, just change the rhythm at the base to somehow incorporate the notion that it was two buildings, you know, with two That certainly came through in the nineteen forty's photo. Certainly comes through in the current condition.
So I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I mean, but what do you think about the eighteen ninety-three facade, which is, which actually, has the building act like one facade?
Well, they're not proposing to take it back?
I know. I don't know what they're proposing to take it back to.
It doesn't appear to, the application doesn't appear to preclude the possibility it's reversible enough that it could go back to that facade. I think the problem there would be the area way out front which would encroach upon the sidewalk almost to the edge of the tree pit that exists there now. I do agree that the regularity of the proposed fenestration is really sort of troubling and regularizing of this facade that was anything but regular at any other period in its life.
Well, eighteen ninety-three it was regular.
But we're not going back.
We're not going back. So, okay, so what's the suggestion? If you want it to become more irregular, what are we suggesting?
I would say they ought to work with staff to try to have it either a few more closely to the current layout where there are two entrances, even though one of them could be... I'd say they should be able to fill it in and modify it, it was clearly a modified elevation to begin with, and doubtless consistent because of all. But I think that something of the notion of that you can read the history of the building and reading originally two structures would be a better solution in terms of its appropriateness.
And really, it's just an issue of minor articulation, and we have extremely talented staff who can do this kind of stuff.
So perhaps it's a matter of just, perhaps removing some of the mounds, making some of the panes of glass a little larger? If you look at the nineteen forty shot, you have a kind of almost ABAB rhythm where you have a narrow entrance and then a wide square storefront pane. I mean, you could, you know, you could recall that, you could use the pilasters that they're already, they're already refabricating a pilaster. You could put in a few more and make like a filled-in entrance. You could retain the old entrance and, you know, work with the rhythm that's there.
Wait, but Michael, are you saying two entrances?
No, I'm saying that, I'm saying that a vestige that would allow the reunion that there had been two entrances. Just like right now, you have a very literal building that has two entrances, one of which is nailed up and not used, but I think there are a number of ways that they could do it. It could be just with rhythm of windows, you know, big window, little window, like that. I just, the other issue for me is, I'm not entirely sure when Bleecker Street became this scary, but there's a whole lot of prison bars on this thing, and I'm not sure what the reference is for that, or whether that's sort of common in the area or not. And I understand their desire to keep the undesirables out, but it's almost prison-like, this whole sort of...
Well, except the lower floors. I mean, so there you have the windows, the...
Plus the gates in front of the door, there's the stoops, et cetera. It does seem like a little bit of overkill.
I guess the question is, if it's residential, what, John was saying, is there a, you know, is there comparable residential, like railing, let's call it, it's meant to be a railing appearance, so maybe it'd look a little...
Not so prison-like?
Yeah.
A little more decorative?
Yeah, and there's got to be a way that other people in the village are protecting themselves from the, you know, the evil people who roam around there.
The stairs, though, exist presently at the entrance, and it's the stoop, it's more to keep people from the vestibule and finding up the stoop than, as I understand it, the gate itself is not going to be locked.
The gate's not going to be what?
The gate is not going to be locked, it's more to prevent people from entering and sitting on the stoop.
Yeah, I think there are like sort of two issues. One is the gate, which he, the architect, said was not really, you know, so obviously it could be reimagined perhaps. And the other is just the railing itself along the, which is like a, you know, meant to be perhaps necessary, but is it reflective of what you would typically find with the residential in this district? And perhaps it could be more preferential and therefore more pleasing.
Okay, so how about this? We recommend that we work with staff on two issues. So one is look at how to perhaps recall that there were two different buildings, and that can be done through either the articulation of the fenestration and, or details, or so we can move that to staff. And the second one is related to the wire gates at the lower level, and is it just the, it's at the entrance?
Yeah, I think it's the entire thing.
Okay, the entire, and a more...
Yeah.
Okay, and look at precedents in the area for something that's more related to the residential nature. You know, I'm trying to get a little bit off. So you say just remove the bars.
Oh, I'd love if they'd just remove the bars, and, I mean, if you walk up and down the street, I don't think, I mean, show me that there's precedent for this and that every other building there protects the bottom level like that, but I don't think that's true.
Right, I think, yes. The building here says that this is sort of a residential on the ground floor and not a retail commercial, and so it's likely different, they have a stoop, and that's the reason why they want to secure the stoop for people from, yeah. But if we feel that stoops should not be enclosed, that's a different issue altogether. Is that critical to your design, to have that gate?
The way it's formed in the shell, I think.
And it's existing.
The gate at the entrance is existing.
Okay.
And then this is residential at the basement level, and even on ground floor rowhouses, we have security at basement level.
Yeah. I'm not objecting to a gate. If you're telling me that exact gate is there right now, then so be it, I can't object to that, right? But I think what you're saying is there is another gate there, and they're just replacing it with something to match this new design. And what I'm suggesting is the design is my problem, not the...
Yes, so you're asking for a design which is more in keeping with residential buildings and softer and not so prison-like?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so basically trying to find better sort of ironwork, okay? All right, Abby?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I can see you. Okay. In the matter of twenty-one Bleecker Street, Manoho East Historic District, the application is to install storefront infill.
Storefront, storefront, storefront.
Okay. Yes, all ground floor infill. Yeah. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo East Historic District. And I also note that the building has a varied history of use as two individual residences, a mission house, a store, and office building, cooperative apartments. And I recommend approval, finding that the remnants of the storefront installation are fragmentary deteriorated and do not read as intact storefronts, and therefore their removal will not result in the loss of any significant architectural features. That the new infill featuring existing cast-iron features, profiled wood trim, and operable and fixed windows with transoms will ensure uniformity and restore transparency to the ground floor and recall the historic facade configuration of a store and office building. That the wooden glass infill material is in keeping with the historic material of similar storefronts found elsewhere in the district, and that the profile trim will recall the articulation of historic storefront framing. That due to the diverse streetscape and various building uses along Bleecker Street, the absence of large show windows will not adversely affect the building's relationship, particularly that of its ground floor to other buildings on the block and the district. That the new storefront configuration featuring a recessed off-center entry with recessed lighting and adjacent basement entry will allow the buildings' base to better relate to the upper floors and allow the building to read as a cohesive facade, though we ask that those, that be slightly modified in order to articulate the history of the fact that there were two buildings there. That the sloped window at the basement entry will allow for basement access without causing significant visual disruption to the uniform window treatment across the ground. That the installation of new wooden glass doors with transoms will not result in the loss of any significant architectural features. That the iron bars and gates attached directly to the store infill are of simple design and therefore will not conceal or detract from any significant feature of the building. That the proposed dark gray painted finish is in keeping with historic color palettes of similar buildings of this age, style, and type. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo East Historic District. All in favor?
Not really addressing that.
Are we changing it?
The gate and the railings were...
But is that what, that we're working with staff, what's your new design? What does that mean? Better design?
A design sympathetic to other treatments on residential buildings in the neighborhood.
Sounds good. All in favor? All in favor? Is that a case?
Putting the framing work with staff to modulate the infill to...
Yes. All in favor? And the proposed? Application's approved.
The next sign-in is number nine, an application for a certificate of appropriation of the Borough of Manhattan, Docket number eighteen dash one six eight seven, one oh four to one ten Green Street in Soho, Class Tower Historic District, block four nine 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 seven. A store and office building with classical-style details designed by William Delphi and built in nineteen oh eight. The application is to install new door signs to spray the trees and lighting.
Good morning Commissioners, Historic Preservation Staff. The application for one oh four through one ten Green Street is to install new infill in these two end bays here, and to install the trains on either side of the southernmost entrance, and to replace existing lighting above the cornice. And as the existing conditions, there are nonhistoric doors at either entrance, and existing light fixtures are, will be removed and replaced with a new light fixture. And the applicant is here to further discuss this proposal.
Good morning Commissioners, Bill Higgins of Higgins Quays Park. I'd like to give some existing conditions and historical background, and then Alex Albiro of the Phillips School, the architect, will describe the figures in detail. This is a building that was really one of the early examples of a commercial and sort of art-oriented, commercial reuse in Soho in the late seventies. The building was owned by Tony Gold Min who is no longer with us, but was a sort of classic and colorful figure in Soho. He was the kind of developer who always thought about the character of the districts in which he worked, and how to integrate a sort of lively commercial presence with those districts. those districts, there's a lot of the sort of spirit of Tony Goldman in this, and what we are proposing, we think is sort of in that same vein, is not, as you will see, the restorative approach, but it is one that recognizes that the evolution to adaptive reuse, retail with a sort of art flavor about it, has really become part of the ongoing history of Soho, and I mention that because I do hope you will consider that sort of role or issue in evaluating this application. So the application does include, well, it's not the application, but the project includes under an existing certificate of no effect, some pretty substantial restoration, including replication in limestone of missing segments of the main cornice, it also includes the removal of these lighting fixtures, which actually are approved under a two thousand eight certificate of, excuse me, two thousand six certificate of appropriateness, with something that is much, much less intrusive than these, it includes keeping the existing approved flag poles, replacing the flags. The doors all date to the two thousand six approval, and the doors are all non-original, and as you'll see, the doors are not very well documented historically, but we do know that there has been a substantial amount of change in which we would also ask you to consider in reviewing this application, so the existing doors consist of wood doors in the two entrances at the north and south bays of the building, and then these metal doors in the space now occupied by design within reach at the center, so there is that south bay, these are Tony Goldman sculptural, there's one, this is sort of irrelevant, but this is the building that has the sidewalk, that is the subway map.
Yep.
That's definitely one of the most interesting features in Soho, and this is the classic Soho move to have installed that sidewalk. So that is the north door, and here is the existing south door, the oddity about this space, I'm not sure if it's historical, but it is highly important functionally, is that this door leads to a retail space which has absolutely no exposure on the street other than this door, and so you'll see that the proposal to do vitrines in the brickwork on either side, that is the reason for this, this is a, in terms of sort of visibility, this is a landlocked space that has no other connection to the street and has the need to operate as a retail space, so there are these post-two thousand six doors. Here is more detail, again, this will be done under an existing certificate of no effect, but there is a substantial restoration component to this entire project. Documentation of historical conditions unfortunately is pretty limited, but the nineteen forty tax photo does show doors in that northern bay, the 110 Green Street side, and it's hard to make it out precisely, but they're pretty clearly not original, there seems to be a slight projection of the doors themselves beyond the plane of the transom, and so we think that this represents an early generation of change, so we're proposing door changes which will give a more regular and consistent presence for the doors, and they are in the content of a history of substantial change to the doors, so I'm going to turn it over to Alex, can I present?
Just a quick question, if you don't mind, please.
Sure.
The columns though, in the doorways, are post-modern blue?
No, they are from nineteen sixteen, from the original construction of the building. They are limestone, but they have several generations of coating, and the lower levels of the coating are not paint.
Are they in the photographs, or are they just difficult to read in the photographs, the historic photograph?
They're there.
Okay, I just couldn't.
I mean, they are difficult to read, but they're there.
It's interesting, because they're going to take any lead to that area.
Yeah, no, they're reading.
Good morning, Alex Abbiello from TPG Architecture, and so as Bill has noted, the existing building is, the existing building has the retail space on the center, which is currently occupied by the design within reach, and what we'll add and notice that the building has undergone substantial modification or modifications to this lower portion of the facade from its historic condition, and this was done under previous ownership in order to create this retail entry here and to drop the window line from the original condition, so that was this condition here, and what currently exists is now this condition. And so the proposal, as Bill noted, is really to start to bring the existing conditions, to start to restore some portions of the facade, to improve the lighting, to improve the overall conditions of the storefront, with respect to lighting and visibility, and to improve the conditions of the two entrances, the building entrance to the north and the retail entrance to the south, as regards their current use and visibility, and so the proposal is, has several components, above is the existing condition of the building, and below is the proposal, and moving sort of from top to bottom, the first component is the restoration of the masonry and cornice in conjunction with the removal of the existing sort of industrial-style street lighting, and the replacement of that with a linear LED style of lighting that is mounted above the cornice line, from the joberg and the masonry above cornice line, and that is intended to then provide a grazing wash across the surface of the building, so the proposal is to go from the point source lighting, which really sheds sort of industrial light on the building, to a, what we believe is a friendlier grazing wash across the top of the building. The existing windows on the second floor of the building are all anodized black aluminum, and the existing doorway at center of the building, the design within reach space, is a brushed stainless steel, and the proposal today is to, is to replace the wooden doorway at the building entry, and the wooden doorway, which does not match, at the retail entry, with matching full height doorways in a brushed stainless steel to match the, to be consistent with the center doors of the entry, and as I noted, these two doorways actually do not match, these doorways will match in terms of their material and construction, but not in terms of their height, because the street actually slopes down, and in conjunction with the replacement of the doorway, the proposal is to remove this portion of black granite step, which currently impedes ADA access to the retail space, and to bring the entry down to sidewalk level, which allows that retail space now to have ADA access. The plits to the columns are retained, but the actual width of the doorway is brought down to street level. In conjunction with this, one of the aspects of the building is that, if I can go back, it's currently very difficult to actually tell that this is the building entry, there is actually no existing signage at the entry, there is no signet, and really the only signage is a small, is the small 110 here on the molding or the cornice line, and similarly, at the retail entrance, there is no fixed signage, there is, this is a transom that's been infilled by this temporary tenant, and there's no existing retail signage at the existing retail space, and so a part of this proposal is to install armatures above both the building entry and the retail entry, and these are armatures in an open canopy, really it's a signage armature, that comes out and is arced across its front to echo the arc of the arch, and is four inches in height, and that is intended to support pin-mounted stainless steel signage, and on the northern entry, that is the building signage, and on the southern entry, that is intended to be the retail tenant's signage. Similar signage to this is can be found in the Mercer Hotel, Bloomingdale's Soho, at the Scholastic Building, it's a, and the intention here is to provide a means of signage that is, that does not actually come into the building structure, but actually is mounted into the masonry on the sides of the archway, and projects forward of that. Finally, the proposal is for the southern retail space, is to introduce, display vitrines, which are recessed into the existing masonry structure, and these would start at the line of the base and go up two and a half bays, three foot in width, and this size is intended to provide display, or an adequate display for the retail space within, we have looked at smaller vitrines in the concern is that if this is a clothing retailer, if this is a, everything, you know, a retailer who needs sort of a bust form, the size of clothing, smaller vitrines start to impede that ability to display in those vitrines. So as we work this out, here we have the plan for the space, the removal of the step, this entry, one of the features of these entries are that they're deeply recessed, and one of the proposals is to provide a second layer of lighting, which is mounted to the armature here, which actually lights the entry proper, which solves one of the issues of the facade, which is at night, the entryways themselves are in shadow because they're deeply recessed. The detail for the arch, for the proposal at the entry itself, here we have the masonry arch, and here's the detail for the armature, which is mounted above the line of the cornice into the side, the masonry, at the side of the arch, we would align the mounting points for this so as to be into the masonry joints, and the proposed pin-mounted signage above that, and the proposal is for a twelve inch pin-mounted sign for the retail tenant. This drawing illustrates the extent of the current raised step that is proposed to be brought down to sidewalk level with ADA access, and the black granite material would be matched into the new entryway.
Okay, yes, I'm wanting to have a question.
I understand the intent obviously is the lack of visibility for the store, but I'm a little concerned about the loss of historic fabric of this very nice rusticated brick pier, you used the word pin-mounted several times, and also whether you have considered alternative means of just letting people know that this is a store inside rather than having to do physically, you know, penetrate a very nice rusticated brick pier.
We, well, the first means of course is to increase the visibility through the doorway, the doors themselves are five foot six wide and are recessed, and our concern is that even with a more transparent glass doorway, that because of the recessed nature of facade, so if we go back, if we look at this entry, with the facade being recessed and the doorway being, you know, five foot six wide, it, there is no ability to actually show a retail function without blocking.
But, yes, Dana?
Yeah, what had occurred to me, and I just wanted to ask if you had explored this here where it's possible, we've got some art sculptural works on the sidewalk, could you not have something of a kind of standing display panel, when that, could that be permitted, could you possibly get that permitted, so that you could do something external to the building and have standing display panels of some sort outside rather than as part of the building, is that anything?
It is possible that it could be, well, for lack of a better, with rolling vitrines.
Yeah, okay, that's a good way to describe what I was thinking about, yeah.
It's an issue of sidewalk obstruction and security and.
But is there something that is, sorry, sorry, just something that is just mounted as opposed, because here you have to actually recess the wall, right, and so is there something you could add more sort of temporary, that you could just mount on and have some depth to it?
Well, we are, the code actually doesn't permit us to place architectural projections
Not even, right.
Even four inches deep below certain height.
Okay.
So that and anything that would be, anything other than sun o'er would be too shallow, mounted at high level.
Got permission to do that sculpture of stuff. Okay, do you, do you have a tenant as yet?
I don't, there is a tenant in the space currently, I don't know.
Oh, in the space right now?
Yes.
Oh, that's true.
Absolutely, it's pending, that's the character of the tenancy here, it's.
Okay, so they call attention at some because they've got the banner, right?
They have the banner, correct, they would have, they, so they have the banner, so it's existing condition, they have the banner above, and then maybe there is a temporary sign on the transom, and other than that, that's the extent of their identity on the facade.
Okay, are there other questions? All right, we'll take Tesley, thank you, we may call you back. Barbara Seig?
Barbara Seig, Historic District Councilwoman, while HDC finds the proposed doors and signage to be appropriate, we urge the commission to deny the proposed vitrine windows, this brick building features a faux rusticated base and a consistently symmetrical scheme throughout, not only would it be a shame to punch holes into the masonry detracting from the solidity of the building's base, but the windows admire the symmetry of the ground floor and in fact, the entire building, thank you.
Are there any more speakers in this meeting? All right, Community Board Two recommends approval of entablage restoration in south entrance, if existing look is kept, but denial of doorway alterations including change of doors, vitrines, and lighting. Okay, that's the Community Board's recommendations. All right, do you have any response to that, or do you have any more questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right, so I think the issue really here is the vitrines, and I'm just wondering if there are other ways for them to attract their tenant without actually having vitrines, and for having them. And for having them to be, I don't know, you can actually do with them four inches, anything, but, but it doesn't have to be the display of your mannequin, which takes up a lot more depth. And it could be more abstract in terms of trying to attract people. There's obviously high end detail, and I think that mean goes a long way. But I, I think I share the concerns that have been said on this table and in my testimony about including or allowing these vitrines because it is a very symmetrical building. And I think the other changes seem fine, but, but this really is taking raw fabric. In some ways, it's more permanent than things that are just much more temporary. Yes, Michael?
I agree. I think that actually Diana's idea was excellent. And I think this building has a rather long history post, post repurposing of having stuff on the sidewalk. And I think that it'd be great if they want to have a, we saw Stern, Robert Stern did the, did that little glass vitrine thingy on the sidewalk. I think that would be better than messing with this beautiful, heavy rusticated base of a building. And it would kind of be in keeping with the streetscape in front of this building anyway if they did something creative and apart from the building as opposed to on it that harmed its symmetry.
I, I hear you. I personally don't like the idea of advertising, this, you know, freestanding advertising. And I think the RISD, I'm doing art is very different from advertising. So I would prefer them to think of a more, a shallow box or something that they can put that can be easily removed, and they can work with staff on that.
The thing I would suggest is, I think that, I don't see where the idea of the mark, basically, you have these marquees that they're adding, projecting from the building. I would feel, again, because of the history of the building and it's in the weight of the base, of keeping the signage flush with the face of the building and not projecting. And it should be symmetrical. It looks like the signage on one side is considerably smaller than the signage on the other.
Okay. So why do we ask that they work with staff on that issue as well? To bring the signage projections closer to the face of the building and to make sure it's symmetrical in terms of its lettering and style?
And then removing fabric from between?
And removing the, yes, the masonry, the historic masonry, the chains.
Yes.
Okay. John?
In the matter of Document Number 18-1687, 104110, Green Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, applications to install new doors, signage, display vitrines, and lighting. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval with minor modifications that the proposed new doors will restore the height of the historic doors and the two end bay openings and will be consistent with the design materials and finishes of the existing doors and the central opening, giving the base a more harmonious appearance. The removal of the stone step at the southernmost entrance will not cause elimination of a significant architectural features and will provide barrier free access in the least intrusive way possible. That the proposed marquees with signs above the two entrances will be installed within the openings and above the decorative piers and architraves, thus not obscuring or causing damage to any significant protective features of the facade. However, we would request that the signage be, the projection of the signage be flush with the face facade of the building and that the, the size of the signage be symmetrical in the two openings. That projecting, skip that one, that lighting of the sign, for the signs and entrances will be installed within the signage armatures and thus will not call undue attention to itself. That removal of the existing light fixtures above the building's base will eliminate features that detract from the special historic and architectural character of the building and that the proposed lighting above the base will be more discreet and is designed to be better integrated into the architecture than the existing features. However, I find that the rusticated brick piers are integrated to the composition of facades, thus the installation of the proposed inset display vitrines at the piers flanking the southern entrance would result from the loss of historic fabric and detract from the architectural character of the building. I therefore recommend that the vitrines be eliminated or shallow surface mounted displays be proposed that would not require removing portions of the masonry wall and that the applicant work with staff to develop an alternative to the vitrines.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioner's Item 10 is an application for certificate of appropriate disinteriorment Manhattan, Document Number 178798. This is 163 Mercer Street located within Soho Cast Iron Historic District. It's a stable wagon house and storage building signed by G. Van Nostrand and built in 1867 and altered in 1948. The application is to remove vinyl signage installed without landmark preservation commission permits, paint the facade, alter the masonry openings, replace doors and windows, install signage, and install a ramp.
Good morning, Commissioners Caroline, Passion, Preservation Staff. Subject property is located on the west side of the street, just to the south of Houston Street. There are several components to this application. First, the applicant is proposing to remove this applied vinyl graphics that was installed without permits and to paint the facade white. They're also proposing to alter window and door openings at the ground floor and install new laced infill to replace the steel window at the second floor, install a bracket sign above the southernmost opening, and finally, to install an 88 ramp. The architect, Edward Mills, is here to discuss this proposal and warn yourself.
Hi, I'm Ken Mills. I'm the architect and associate architect here, and also the architect is not a local worker. Okay, as you can see, the historic, where's the, oh, that's it. Oh, that one. You can see the tax block photograph made in the late 30s or early 40s was a four story cast iron building. Somewhere between that time and when the Historic District was designation, I think it was, what, 73, 1973. So the work between the historic tax photograph and 1973, something happened to it. It either was tore down, burnt, or something. The only remaining elements are two pediments, not pediments, two plasterers on each side and sort of a cast on rental of all that. But the rest of it's a brick infill. My tenant took over the building a couple of years ago and would like to modify the entrance to allow a symmetrical facade, a symmetrical window here down to the ground, parrot doors, and a crossway or symmetrical exit. All of this will be starfired glass, black frames, and this will be back painted glass with newer hardware for the exit. There would be a handicap ramp built out of metal, and it's only six inches high, so it doesn't need any handrail. Above the entrance, there will be a uplight and downlight that would be right here. That would be a little bit wider than the entrance, replacing the existing lighting. The second floor window would be replaced with a host type opable, two opable side frames in fixed in the middle. Also, the original designation photograph, which you can probably see, the top was modified sometime after 1973. So we're, and I can see, they took off the two sort of corner pieces. We're putting it back. We're also modifying the middle piece to go back to the original. The, there's a gray sign out front, and we would clean the facade and re-pore it and paint it, what, the photographic board. These are the drawings showing the, this is the drawing showing the entrance versus the home. This is the existing, this would be the new. She's putting up the, this would be the color of the mullions. The back painted glass will be this color, this is the gray glass. This will be painted by the, the metal jetting. This is the existing sidewalk, showing the neighbor next door. I guess one of the important points, this building is very unique in this block. It's the only one like it in the whole block. And you can see from this photograph that this is our building. This block is normally about five to six stories tall, across the street, same. Our two story building is unique. There's a three story building here, but there's a bigger building, one you go here. So you can see it's very unique, it's a brick building. So we tried to, by painting it white, we wanted to make it join the neighbor a little better. And it is a unique building. This is the cast on work, restoring that.
Any questions? So just, you've given us a report that talks about the brick. Is the existing brick not in, yes, I'm asking a question, yes. That's fine.
That was the question we were asked.
No, is that the reason why you just still want to keep the brick facade? Is it because the brick is not holding up?
You don't want to keep it or you want to keep it?
I know, right, but not exposing, not keeping it exposed.
No, no. It's a, it's a unique kind of building on the block, and it doesn't, it doesn't work the way it does right now. We think maybe lighter makes it look a little better, less of an industrial.
So it's not because of the condition of the brick?
Well, the brick is different. And what I mean by that, it's a raw brick.
But the top brick is different.
The top brick is more rusticated, the lower brick is more. So when we build, change things, the, it's been rebuilt, we think, at least on one occasion, since 47, 48.
Other questions? Any other questions? Okay.
Barbara Seig of Historic Districts Council. HDC asks that the applicant investigate a more neutral paint color. Our committee was toying with gray perhaps, since the proposed white would be a stark contrast to the black trim and also would fit in, something more muted might fit in a little bit better on the streetscape, especially given the minimalist character of the new infill. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Board recommends approval of the parapet frustration blade sign and ramp and denial of the facade, work, infill, and lighting because the proposed changes are out of character for the district. All right, comments? Yes?
I agree with the testimony with regard to the paint color. I think the white is an extremely stark and obvious color here. If you want to blend in with what is and was an industrial area, I think, first of all, the buildings on either side typically cast iron is painted to replicate stone. So an off white or something more toward a buffalo glow would be more appropriate.
Okay, we can ask them to work with staff on choosing a palette that is more in keeping. And I think even their own testimony was about the fact that they were looking at this lighter color because it would complement the building to, to the, to the right. So we can ask them to do that and work with staff. Are there any other comments? Okay, good. Diana?
In the matter of a certificate of appropriate disinteriorment Manhattan, Document 178798, 163 Mercer Street, Soho Cast Iron Historic District. Application is to remove vinyl signage installed without landmark preservation commission permits, paint the facade, alternate masonry openings, replace doors and windows, install signage, and install a ramp. I recommend approval with modification, finding that the removal of the existing vinyl graphics at the brick facade will eliminate unsympathetic alterations that detract from the building without causing removal of any historic fabric. The painting the underlying red brick of the front facade with a suitable light color will be, to be worked out with the landmark staff, will be in keeping with a light palette found in other industrial buildings, both masonry and cast iron in the Historic District. That the metal and glass parrot doors and syncopated window will be consistent with other modern infill at the ground floor of buildings of this time. That the steel multi light windows at the second floor opening will recall the skin and character of the multi light configuration of the existing windows that are characteristic will be waiting for need alteration. That the proposed bracket sign will be in keeping with the types of signs historically found in buildings of this age and time. That the location of the bracket sign by the e-glass door will relate to the commercial space it advertises. That the proposed installation of the ramp will neither damage nor destroy historic features and will not intrude on the streetscape. And that the location of the proposed sidewalk ramp and its simple design featuring black painted steel diamond plate will recall the presence of historic loading platforms found traditionally at other buildings in this district.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved.
Thank you. Thank you for saying this.
Okay. All right. Oh, and 12:30 is okay for us to, or, so, okay, 12:40?
Yeah, 12:40.
Okay, Commissioner, so next item on the agenda is Item 12, an application for certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Document Number 181954, 134 Worcester Street, located within Soho Cast Iron Historic District. It's a one story garage built in 1946, 47. The application is to demolish the existing building and construct a new building.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Sarah Riffle, Preservation Staff. This is a proposal to demolish the existing one story garage building located at 134 Worcester Street, located between Prince and West Houston Street on the east side of the street. This was a building that was photographed twice by the photographers taking images in the 1930s, early 40s. We can see the image on the left hand side, a three story building located at the site. And then, we can see it obliquely in this view from the south looking north. And then we can see it again here. So we think that this may have been done because the building was demolished and replaced with a one story garage building. And the owner obviously didn't want to pay taxes on the larger building and instead would prefer to pay taxes on the smaller building. So here we have a sign, Blue Comet Express. And by 1980s, tax photo, also from municipal archives, not much had changed. And keep in mind that the Soho Cast Iron Historic District designation occurred in 1973. So we think that this may have been done because the building was demolished and replaced with a one-story garage building. And the owner obviously didn't want to pay taxes on the larger building and instead would prefer to pay taxes on the smaller building. So here we have a sign, Blue Comet Express. And by nineteen eighties, tax photo, also from municipal archives, not much had changed. And keep in mind that the Soho Cast Iron Historic District designation occurred in nineteen seventy-three. And the building was thirty-seven and a half feet wide, constructed nineteen forty-six to nineteen forty-seven. So by nineteen eighty, the Blue Comet Express sign had been replaced with a painted jar of fuel sign. And there was a roll-down security gate, tracks and housing with a little, maybe more recent door on the south side of the opening. Here we have some existing condition images and views of the street context. Here's the building as it appears today. Again, not much changed in this nineteen eighty tax photo. We have two signs. One, the blue Adidas sign centered over the masonry opening for the garage entrance, as well as a projected bracket sign, and a painted white surface for the brick, new metal railing at the parapet. And not much else had changed. So in terms of where we are, in terms of our footprint, here's our building. And in terms of the context on the street, on the east side of Worcester Street, we're finding a context of mostly, let's see here, five to six-story masonry buildings, except for here, this location, one forty-six to one fifty, Worcester Street, where the commission recently approved the demolition of a one-story garage building and the replacement with a new building. That would be developed in the future. Another one-story garage building, we're not aware of any redevelopment plans at this time in our building. And then you can see immediately to the south, one twenty-five Prince Street. You can see on the west side of the street, a significant difference in terms of the buildup and amassing and the density on the street from the south side to the north. So here we see more six to eight-story tall buildings, except for one forty-seven and one fifty-seven. So here is a mid-block condition, and here is at the corner of Worcester and Houston. In terms of our due diligence efforts, we surveyed the entire Soho district, as well as the extension, looking at examples of obviously approved demolition and redevelopment projects, and found twenty-four examples, seven of which included demolition and redevelopment for one-story buildings, including garages. So I wanted to turn it over to Morris, who walked you through inspiration.
Can you just, just a quick question, back to that map. So what's, you've highlighted some in yellow, is it...
Yes, these were the seven examples that we found that indicated the approval of demolition of existing one-story buildings, including garages. Some of them were parking lot, intended booths, and whatnot. And then we highlighted all of those in yellow on the map. So you can see that we're seeing more of the density of them in the northern portion of the district. But there is a dispersion of demo and redevelopment projects here in the district.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Morris Adjmi, the architect of the project. We looked at the historic examples throughout the district, and I believe that we're proposing something that is a contemporary interpretation of the district with a, I think, an interesting, unexpected take on the way that these buildings are organized. The model, the model here, I don't want to war depth about the, the facade and the organization of the facade. But one of the things that we thought was important was to create a strong base middle and top, and we've used the arches and changed the base facing to essentially those differences as you go up the building. And by setting back the uppermost floor, there is a setback beyond that, but the uppermost floor of the street wall, we really were able to create a very deep corners, which I think is typical of a lot of the buildings here. You can see on this section, the facade is set back, starting at the ground floor, one and a half feet, and then two foot eight, and then three foot ten, as you get to the top floor. And the columns also start out at six inches, they may build up steel plates. This is just a paper model, but six inches, then eight, and then ten inches as they go up. And the horizontal elements are ten inches, the same as those piers. And the ground floor is retail, and the above, the upper floor is office. So we looked at a number of buildings. We have some diagrams to show how those work. This is one oh-one Spring, Donald J. House. And one of the things that we found was very interesting about this project is that it's sort of an inversion of what you would typically see in classical organization of facade, where the ground floor has the lightest members, which is similar to what we did, moving up the building to the heavier members at the top. And here's a diagram that shows how that works. And one of the reasons why that was done initially was to create as much open space and glass for the retail use of the ground floor, which is something we're doing. And then the next one is a hallit building, which has, curious enough, is a similar organization, where we start with the thinner columns and then get heavier as it goes up. And, you know, culminating with this tremendous core, which is one of the things that we tried to do as well by setting our facade back. Then we have a series of, excuse me, examples, and showing a variety of different things. But the one on the leftmost shows that different types of openings working up this facade, which is similar to what we did. We decided to use all the arches, but to change those arches that went up the facade just showed the prominence of, predominance of buildings that have arches. A lot of the buildings in Soho, obviously, are made of columns and beams, and plasters, piers, and beams, but they're outnumbered with arches, so we think that that's appropriate as well. And then these three, these four examples show that in some cases, or many cases, the base facing changes at the top level, which we did on the top as well as on the bottom. And so we think there is a precedent for that. So here, three bays turn to five. Here, they're tripled up to one super bay. So you get three instead of two, and a similar situation here as well. So we think that that is, oops, sorry, appropriate, and we did a very similar technique on the top layer. And then here's a detail of the facade. The facade essentially is a screen that exists in front of the building, enclosure. And as I mentioned before, we start with the arches. It's about sixteen feet high, which we think works with the streetscape, which I'll show on the screen. And then the center portion, the building itself, has five bays all the way up, and then we go to six bays. And so those are getting, the bays are increasing in number, and the size of the metal also increases. And then showing some of the details of the facade. The piers on the ground floor are a foot deep, and the facade is set back one foot six, so six inches beyond that. We're showing granite, a little granite strip within the property line, small pavers, and then there are little feet on each of the columns, as well as a bulkhead, a granite on the base of the building there. And then as we move up the building, you can see the next floor sets back beyond that. And then there's the detail here for the center section of the building, showing the columns are two foot two, and then the facade is set back two foot eight, so there's a space up on there. And as we move up the building, those go to three foot ten, which I'll show you here. And that enables us to really, you know, have a tremendous, a big course in typically projecting the street. And then this is the existing streetscape. There's a building proposed at one fifty, which hasn't been built yet, but that's what that building will look like on the street. And then the next image shows our building here. We have a setback, seventh floor, and a wood water tower beyond that. And there's some visibility studies, which will show that for this. And here's a detail of the wall of that facade. And we should...
I realize, I realize that I forgot to mention very quickly that the designation report in fact didn't provide a style for building, just listed the building as a garage, western garage. So I just wanted to make that point clear. So in terms of the visibility, I just wanted to walk you through, we studied it both from the north looking south, and then from the south looking north. So I just wanted to walk you through from the maximum points of visibility as we're walking up from West Houston Street along Worcester, moving south. So A, U A here is without any new building, and you can just barely see it, a bleak view of the existing building. And then here we have the proposed view with a bleak view of the street facade, a portion of the north lotline wall. And we'll walk you through the materials in a moment. And then we can see a portion of the setback penthouse, a sliver of the bulkhead above, and then just a little bit of a sliver of the wooden water tank that's being proposed at the roof level. So B, we're now moving a little bit further south. Here again is our building. You'll see a little bit better, but still a bleak view here. Again, the north portion of the lotline wall, and then a bit of the setback section of the penthouse, a little bit more of the wooden water tank at the roof line. Here we are with C. So again, we're moving a little bit further south. Sorry, this is a little bit cut off, but here's our building right here. You'll see a little bit of it here. And so we have more of a view of just the northern portion of the lotline wall. We're not seeing the setback section of the penthouse, we're not seeing the bulkhead from this view. And then if we move a little bit further south, from D, we still have our north lotline wall, and then you're seeing a little bit more of the penthouse that recessed from the plane of the street facade. And then we also wanted to study from the south looking north. So here is our site. Here's our proposed. And because of the one twenty-five Prince Street immediately to the south of our site, there's no visibility of anything at the roof or any portion of, at this portion of the view. And we believe, you know, in terms of the elements and the roof, that they would only be seen either partially or very weakly from a distance for the context of a varied streetscape. And they would not be seen directly from across the street at the rooftop. So Morris, do you have more?
We have the materials here, but just as a reference, we're proposing a above grid for the side and rear, sorry, the rear wall here, and a fenestration we feel is consistent with what you see in the district. Fenestration materials, some punched openings in the brick facade on the east side, which is the rear, this is the last, and then we have the north facade towards the east side of that. And then here's the materials which we have here. And I think it's, the model also to see how that maturation works as you go up.
Thank you. Are there questions? Any, any questions? Yes. This is just a curiosity. How are the sections built up? You said it was plates, are they welded, or...
Welded plates, welded and wrapped. So they'll be plates built up, one-inch plates. These actually are not the depth of each of the members, because even only a foot deep, so the top most one would be about D. So we just made these pieces out there. They would get deeper and deeper as you go.
Any other questions? If you can take testimony. Barbara Z. Yes, thank you. Barbara Z.
Barbara Z. of the historic district council. HDC's public review committee feels that the design of this new building channels modern architecture like that of Lincoln Center more than the cast iron vocabulary of Soho. Our committee was concerned with the proposed color scheme, which is in stark contrast to the neighboring buildings. And finally, HDC questions the proposed height of the penthouse at fifteen feet eight inches, which seems extremely tall for a secondary portion of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right. Community board two recommends approval of the demolition, and I'm paraphrasing here, the denial of the new building unless modified to include substantial base and better proportionality, corners aligned with one thirty-two Worcester, I think at the first story. The first story facade redesigned to be consistent with the legal use of that space, which does not permit commercial use, and that CB two has changed our view of modified proposal. Can you just speak to the issue?
May I respond?
Yes.
I can respond to all of it.
Okay, great.
First off, we did modify the design after we presented to the community board initially the ground floor, or we had a double pipe ground floor. And after listening to what they had to say, we modified it, and I think it actually does work better, so that's why we did it. And they also asked us to have some more solid material at the base, which we introduced the granite, as well as the little shoes that the colors sit on. Regarding the use, we submitted this to the building department and have a full review for zoning, and it is as a right for retail under thirty-six hundred square feet. There was some discrepancy in our lot size versus the building size. The building is thirty-six hundred square feet, and therefore it is allowable.
Okay, because this is an M one-five-eight district, right?
Less than thirty-six hundred.
Right, you could do retail. Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Any other questions? Okay, we can close the hearing then. We'll move. All right. Comments? Yes.
I just want to say that I think that this is just a beautiful interpretation of, of the elements of the historic district, but of so many other things too. An interpretation of the material, of cast iron, and the way that this is a sort of an inverted cast iron. It's kind of like the inside-out cast iron. So interesting, the way you're proposing to devise it. It's almost like the Ms. Van Drouw's interpretation of the classical column in Barcelona Pavilion, the kind of inside-out. I think that the relationship between kind of the storefront, the, sorry, the curtain wall of our time, the glass curtain wall, and its relationship to the steel is very interesting to, the way you've created depth, but made it clear that the structural system is not the steel system in the front. And you really make that clear by having this four-to-five relationship, the four on the ground, and then five with the, you know, without continuing the load, the sort of supposed load. It's very interesting. And just on lots of levels, I think, just a beautiful interpretation. I think that the bit of stone on the bottom is not necessary at all, but I do think that the, what you described as the feet are an important kind of feature as in relating your system, your kind of lacework to the ground. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Diana?
This all sounds strange, because I actually agree with everything. I just said, not that it's strange to agree with her, but that I also, there's, there's something that is troubling me a little, which is that because it's such a light appearing building, which obviously it's meant to be, and it's just graduation by size, unlike many, many of the examples that you see of this type of building, where the base and the top are somewhat different, just a little bit different. I feel a little bit like it's, it's not grounded, that there's a sense it's going to fly away because it has a sort of wedding cake structure without any, a little bit of differentiation at the top and bottom, or somewhere. That's, I'm just feeling a little that it's, as I said, it's not entirely grounded and capped, even though I do like everything about the approach. That's my...
All right. Other comments? Yes.
I just would like to thank the applicant for an amazingly refreshing take on a building for this area. So frequently, we get these sort of quasi Frank Gehry hopeful things that come along. There's enough reference in this to reflect this district. It does what cast iron would love to have done, but it's too brittle, the material, so you're doing it in steel, which is, which is perfect. so you're doing it in steel, which is, which is perfect, but references the cast iron originally. I can't imagine how this could be better. Thank you for this.
All right. Any other comments? I would agree with, do you want to make any comments?
Okay, I would agree with my fellow commissioners. I think this is a beautiful design and it's contemporary, it's elegant, it's respectful to the district. And the only comment I have, and I think you can do it, it's just, I would agree with the testimony about the setback and the floor to ceiling height. I think you can bring that down. It's at 13 feet. And I say that because even though it's not viewed, there's certain, I think certain districts where you can capture some of it, but I think in general, when we've been thinking about buildings with setbacks as sort of a concept in the district, I think we've been particular about that proportion of what happens after you setback. And so I think you can work with staff to bring that down and still ensure that you have a height which is workable for commercial space. But otherwise, I think it's really very stunning and its simplicity is, I think, a beautiful contrast to the streetscape itself.
So if there are no other comments, I think we can move to decision and I think let's, can you keep?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. In the matter of 134 Worcester Street, Soho Cast Iron Historic District, the application is to demolish an existing building and construct a new building. I recommend approval, finding that the existing 1940s garage building does not contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron District. Therefore, its demolition will not result in the removal of significant architectural fabric. That the proposed six-story street wall height is consistent with the street wall of historic buildings found in the historic district on this block. That the plane of the proposed front facade will align with the facades of adjacent properties, thereby reinforcing the street wall, a significant consistent feature in the Soho Cast Iron District. That the construction method of steel hung in front of the structural glass curtain wall represents a contemporary interpretation of the technological innovation of cast iron construction. That the large bays of glazed frame, bays of glazing framed by thin steel columns in spanjos evoke the traditional composition of cast iron loft buildings. That there is a variety of floor to ceiling heights in the building on the block. Therefore, the proposed scale of the fenestration is compatible with other buildings in the streetscape. That the hierarchy of floor heights will be expressed with the top floor being shorter than the ones below and the taller, in a taller base, which is consistent with the typical facade composition of early 20th century commercial buildings located throughout the historic district. That the Soho Cast Iron Historic District is representative of a variety of building systems and materials, most notably load-bearing masonry in cast iron facades that are located directly, in direct proximity to each other. And proposed steel and glass structure among masonry buildings will fit within the varied material palette within the historic district. That the range of materials at the primary facade, including steel, large spans of glass, stone, and the gray face brick at the side faces will relate to traditional building materials found in this historic district while contributing to the building's contemporary design. That the increasing quantity of vertical bays from the ground upward and offset bays at the second and sixth floors are an interpretive, interpretation of the classical ordering of floors and other cast iron buildings within the historic district. That detailing of the facade with, which features steel arches and columns that increase in depth and width with each upward floor will provide a level of depth and articulation comparable to what is found in the historic, found on historic buildings within the historic district. That the proposed colored palette is in keeping with the typical palettes of cast iron facades that were historically intended to imitate stone. That the composition of the ground floor components, including columns, display windows, bulkheads, impaired entrance doors will be compatible with the commercial character of the bases of buildings throughout the district. That the signage consistent, consisting of a bracket sign and lettering on the glass will be typical in terms of placement, dimensions, and materials and its size and quantity will not overwhelm the building. That the setback seven-story glass guard rails and rooftop bulkheads are simple in design and silhouette and will only be seen from the public thoroughfare over a side facade. That the proposed fenestration of the seventh story featuring three bays of full height windows and one metal and glass door is in keeping with the contemporary rooftop additions within the district. That the proposed water tower, which is the tallest element of the design, is a traditional feature of the Soho Cast Iron District roof scape and will enhance the special architectural character of the district. That the lot line facades will be in keeping with secondary facades at buildings in, of this size throughout the district in terms of materials, finish, and simple detailing. That the simple design of the punched openings of the rear building, of the rear of the building will be compatible with utilitarian character of secondary facades and will not be visible from the public thoroughfare. That the use of metal and glass in this building recalls the evolution of these materials in historic district, which initially featured heavy cast iron elements to imitate stone, which later used thinner elements to allow more glass. That this contemporary design is a continuation of the innovative use of materials that grew out of the architecture of this historic district. And that the Soho Cast Iron Historic District was a place of innovative architecture. Therefore, this innovative design and use of materials will enhance with the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron District. That the setback penthouse, however, I find that the setback penthouse is excessive in height and its visibility and results, its visibility results in atypical massing that detracts from the building and the streetscape. Therefore, the staff recommends, I recommend, it's getting long, that the setback penthouse be reduced in height. That's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appeals approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item is item 13, an application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 18-1008, 1501 Broadway, the Paramount Building, an individual and interior landmark. This is a French Bozart style inspired skyscraper designed by Rapp and Rapp and built in 1926 to 27. The application is to replace windows and doors and alter the West 43rd Street facade.
Good afternoon, this is Commissioner, this is Gabriel Alcatroski, Preservation Staff, South of East 1501 Broadway, an individual landmark in Manhattan found by West 43rd and West 44th Street. The proposal before you today concerns alterations at the West 43rd Street facade. It includes removing modern storefront windows and entrance, installing three new entrances, reclining a portion of the facade in limestone, and replacing three windows at the second floor. And the commission should note that this marquee shown in the rendering was previously approved by the commission at an earlier hearing, but has not yet been installed. And the project architect is here to further explain. Thank you. Right and left, and then the red is a draw like a laser.
My name is Bosch Horns, I'm with Golden Horns. Forty Bowles is here, one of our senior associates. And then we have representatives from Mark Hitchens Farm that's doing the new lobby that's working on in the building, and it's Feigl, Giacca, and Elman. David Giacca is in the back. Jason Demond is sitting with us. And Lauren Volchenco is here as well. So basically, this, these are existing photographs of the building. They're in your handouts. We just wanted to show you that the only way the building was put up here, the first street floor was covered with limestone. There is a marquee that had an entrance into the theater as well as the marquee on Broadway, which also took it into the Paramount Theater. And then over the years, they started to, as technology changed, they changed the marquee itself. And then they had all these marquees on the 43rd Street side of the building. These photographs show you what's happening in the neighborhood now. One of the reasons we're moving the entrance to the building on the 43rd Street is the pedestrian plaza that was put in on Broadway. It was complicated the ability for tenants in the building to really get in and out of the building. It's difficult for taxis and lorries to drop off tenants in the building. And you can see from the pictures, you have all the people that are here that occupy the pedestrian walkway. In this picture here, they're doing work in Broad Broadway here and the, they put up these orange fences so that passengers can stop there. This shows you, give you an idea of the neighborhood. Again, this is the marquee that the Paramount Theater had, we were stored a number of years back. This will show you how the traffic works here. Now this is 43rd Street Carnley. Carnley, you have loaded docks in the back here where the marquee entrance to the theater used to be. And then all the way across here is black granite, which is not custard fabric at all. You can see from the previous picture that it was limestone. This shows you closer details of the existing entrance into the Broadway. This is the marquee that used to be just on 43rd Street that we are recreating on 43rd Street for the entrance of the building. And then you can see some of the details here that the entrance firm is picking up in the, in the design of the entrance. So here is the black granite. These are existing windows and doors. And what's happening here is we're changing, whoops, sorry. We're changing these doors and opening this heater to create a new entrance into the lobby, into the building. You know, it's going to be a multi-story lobby with those instructions through that. But this will be the entrance to the building and the escalators taking the roof to sky lobby. The marquee moved install as definition of what the new entrance to the building is. This is the rendering of what the marquee and front will look like. These marquees were approved at Crete's, these signs have also been approved at Crete's hearing and we're in the process now of creating, searching documents that we will present to landmarks in order to get approval. This shows the sidewalk pattern that's being created in front of the building to put in a lobby door and side, side doors so that it's very similar to the existing entrance into the building now. Now this is the new lobby that's being created. These are the escalators that are going to go up to the third floor. The architect has done an incredible job in terms of the design of the lobby that we probably will present to you at some point so that you guys can approve it. It's inside is amazing. Here is a section that shows you, this is the street here coming in. This is a two-story high space, which is why the windows, those windows are going to be changed to the single light blazing rather than double blazing. And this shows you, the escalator takes you up to the third floor. This is a section on the other side, reception desk. We're creating a wheelchair elevator as well. This is a close-up of the marquee. You can see that the details, well, we'll see, but the details of the entrance, the entrance reflects the details that are on the existing entrance right now. Again, the marquee will be there. And this is a rendering of what it will look like when it's done. You can see the limestone facade, again, bronze doors, the bronze revolving door. And these reflect the same details that currently exist on Broadway. Done.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any speakers from members of the public? Speakers? Can you? Yes.
The only windows you're showing on the second floor are the windows above the, above the marquee. And there's going to be single pane windows.
These here, one, two, and three on the other side. All the other windows in the building are double pane. We've replaced those over the last several years with approval by landmarks. These are the only three windows that will be replaced. And again, to help define the two-story space that's at the entrance.
Okay, no speakers. Community Board Five recommends approval, but urges the owner to develop a master plan at some point. Any questions for the applicant? We can close the hearing. No comments? It's a very sensitive design. Bringing back the limestone and pouring in entrance. The marquee was already approved and the changing of the windows at the second floor level, I think some of it's anyway obscured by the marquee, but that's a very simple move from double hung to a single pane. Okay, good.
All righty. Regarding 1501 Broadway, the Paramount Building, an individual and interior landmark, the application is to replace windows and doors and alter the West 43rd Street facade. I note that the west, the ground floor at the West 43rd Street was altered prior to designation and that Broadway between West 42nd and 43rd Streets is a pedestrian area. I also note that the commission approved two marquees at the ground floor at the West 43rd Street facade, so I recommend approval. Finding that the Broadway facade fronts a pedestrian plaza with limited vehicular access to the Broadway entrance and that the creation of a new primary entrance at West 43rd Street is a response to this condition. That the existing opening storefront infill stone cladding at the West 43rd Street facade are not original to the building and therefore the proposed alterations will not eliminate or damage any historic fabric. That the proposed three new openings at the ground floor will align with the upper floor window openings, creating a symmetrical facade that relates well to the upper floors. That the proposed entrance doors will run with the commission-approved marquee, therefore help to demark the entrance and enhance the prominence of the restored marquee, demarcate the entrance. And that although the proposed single light window at the second floor will not replicate the building's historic window configuration, the replacement above the marquee in the entrance doors will create a unified composition highlighting these three bays at the facade's primary entrance and will be reflective of the double height lobby space at the interior of the building. That the proposed infill featuring decorative cast bronze framed doors, side lights and a revolving door will replicate the materials finishing details at the historic entrance of the Broadway facade. That the proposed Indiana limestone cladding will replace the historic building cladding materials at these three bays and restore the ground floor's material and visual relationship to the building's limestone clad base and buff back upper floors and that the work will not diminish the special architectural, historic character of the landmark.
All in favor? Any opposed? Appeals approved.
The next item is number 14.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 18-1557, 43 West 23rd.
18-1557, 43 West 27th Street, Madison Square North Historic District, uh, block 829, Lot 13. A Bozart style store and office building designed by Louis C. Moore and built in 1906 to 07. And the application is to replace windows.
Sorry. Why am I scared?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Catherine Redd, the Len of the Preservation Department staff. This proposal is to replace nonhistoric windows at five floors at this primary facade at 43 West 27th Street. And we have architects Jordan Rogoff and Kristin Woschko from DXA here to describe the proposal.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Jordan Rogoff, partner at DXA Studio.
Uh, Kristin Woschko, the project manager of 43 West 27th Street. Um, so just to give you a little bit of background on the project located at 43 West 27th Street between Sixth Avenue and Broadway. We are proposing kind of a comprehensive restoration of the exterior, um, much of which has already been approved at staff level. And the scope of this includes restoration of the historic cornice and water table storefront at the front facade as well as window replacements at the side and rear facade. Um, what we're here to propose today is the replacement of 20 existing nonhistoric windows at the front facade. Um, and, uh, the reason for this, um, not being, to be approved at staff level is just because, um, the existing historic windows are kind of a, a very tricky and unique operability, um, that is very, very difficult to recreate today. We've nicknamed them the tilt action windows. So they actually look very similar to double hungs. When closed and when opened, they actually tilt and slide on top of each other.
The sash, the upper sash that goes in front of the lower sash. Uh, and we contacted a number of window manufacturers. Most of them ran in the other direction. Uh, the few that were willing to do it would not provide a warranty. The lowest price we could find for each one of the windows was about $12,000 on average, about $20,000 per window. So early on, it was a very hard thing to return to our client for approval. Um, they opted, and over the course of conversation with staff, to take the money that otherwise would have gone to, towards those windows and do a full restoration of the facade. So we wanted to show you today, walk you through all of that. Uh, and what we're proposing in lieu of that tilt action window operability is a double hung window that matches in profile, material and color. So when it's closed, it'll appear identical to the tilt action windows. Uh, in the case of the tilt action windows, um, that we can salvage, I think there's 12 of them altogether, um, we will take them off-site and restore them, uh, and restore the operability. So there will still be a vestige of the original operability of the window with what we're
So the, the building is a nine-story building in the Bozart style. It's located in the Madison Square North Historic District. Um, it's a, flanked by a 12-story and a seven-story building. It's about halfway down the block, um, between Sixth Avenue and Broadway. These are some street views showing, uh, that the front facade and the windows that we would propose to replace are indeed visible. Um, this is starting at Sixth Ave, walking towards the building and then moving back away from it towards Broadway. The 1938 historic photo on the left shows the building in much of its original condition, including the historic cornice and water table. About two-thirds of the way up, you can see one of those historic windows, uh, partially oper, uh, in, in operation. Um, you can see from 1938 to 1980, much of the historic fabric has been removed from the building. So the cornice and water table were replaced with a cement stucco. Um, many of the windows were replaced with double hungs by this point. Showing the existing and proposed conditions. Um, you can see that in addition to the windows being replaced with double hungs, they were also replaced with double hungs that did not match the finish or the materiality of the existing windows. The existing are wood and many of the replaced are aluminum.
And white.
And, and white. Yeah, you can see at the second and the fifth floor, they're, they're white. Some of the other ones are black. But this is something we're hoping to remedy with our proposal is to have all of the windows to, to, uh, match the existing historic, the storefront and the cornice and water table. Um, and just to be very clear about the scope that we're presenting today, everything that's outlined in red has already been approved at staff level. Uh, the gray are those 12 existing historic windows, which we will be restoring. Um, and then the orange are the windows that we are proposing to replace. This is a close-up of the facade. So you can see on the fourth, the sixth and the seventh floors, those are the existing historic windows. And you can see kind of sticking out like a sore thumb on the fifth floor is, is the white aluminum replacement double hung window. To give you a better sense of the operability of these windows, these are the existing historic windows, um, partially open, so you can see how they tilt and slide over one another. They're in fairly poor condition now, so, uh, we are proposing to strip, patch where necessary, repair the operability, the mechanism where possible. We'll try and keep as much that's there that, you know, is salvageable. Um, but everything else, you know, that we do need to repair and then repaint in a, in a finish consistent with the other historic elements of the facade. The window surrounds are also in fairly poor condition, so our proposal would be to restore those as well. Um, the wood mullions between the windows, um, as you can see on the, on the right image, uh, are in fairly poor condition on, on certain openings. So where that's the case, we would, uh, restore those as well. Technical drawing showing on the left is the existing historic window and on the right is the, uh, proposed replacement. So when closed, uh, these windows will look almost identical. We're matching the profiles as closely as is possible with kind of modern day, uh, window profiles. And they will match, there'll be wood to match the existing historic. Um, and I believe the next page, the finish, uh, will be, uh, approved, you know, to be approved by, uh, LPC. And, and looking at some of the historic, um, photographs, it looked as though the color was not quite black, but just, uh, a shade or two lighter than black.
A high contrast color.
Right.
And it, it appears on the exit windows that the, the paint had been scraped. There was only actually one or two there to paint, so all the original, there's nothing there to really gauge. Some conversations with staff and the little, the little bits that we were able to identify, we're, we're fairly confident it was a kind of charcoal, um, range.
And this is the physical sample here. So it's showing up a little bit darker on this area. It is a little bit lighter here. Um, and that's our proposal. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, Dan.
Yeah, I just said one, which is, uh, you're removing the windows and the window surrounds and, uh, I was just wondering if it might be possible to, um, have some of the original windows lower down or?
No, leave the location.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they're, they're fairly, uh, you know, they're fairly standard high. So I think that is a possibility. Um, again, we'd have to do a little bit more research on that. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to accommodate that since we're already taking them out to restore.
Yeah, I just saw it from street level, like nothing.
Sure. Rather random pattern, uh, you know, with no inherent reason why.
Why some give out.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Are there any speakers on the site? No speakers. Community Board Five recommends approval. All right, yes.
It's, uh, it's right path windows, so they specialize in the work.
And I think staff actually recommended them to, so.
All right, if you don't have any questions, we can, uh, close the hearing then. All right, comments?
I thought that this is the kind of window that we're being, we, or window that they have is the kind that we're being asked to approve all the time on these, these net zero or, uh,
The passive house.
Passive house buildings. Are they with the, are they casings? They, they open? They're in the? They're not. It's actually, the lower sash is, is the case. They're not hoppers. It has, it's a plane.
Interesting.
Well, I think, I think it's fine. I think the proposal's fine. I think, I think Diana's idea is a nice idea to have, have them moved down lower, make it more effective.
If it's possible, yeah.
I think that's good too. Okay, great. Michael?
Yeah. In the matter of 43 West 27th Street in the Madison Square North Historic District, an application to replace windows. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed new one-over-one double hung painted wood windows will replace existing modern conventional one-over-one aluminum replacement windows only and will not eliminate existing historic tilt action windows from the facade or district, which are to remain and be rehabilitated pursuant to a previously issued staff level permit. That the proposed windows will match the surrounding historic windows in terms of configuration details, materials and finish. The double hung operation of the new windows will not be perceptible when the windows are in a closed position. That the proposed pattern of installation of the double hung windows at floors without historic windows will not interrupt the continuous character of the historic tilt action windows across a given floor. And therefore, the proposed installation of the new windows will not call attention away from the historic windows and will support the architectural and historic character of the facade in Madison Square Historic District. And the applicant will work with staff to possibly move, uh, existing historic windows to lower areas on the facade.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Commissioners, the next item, item 15 is an application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 172039. This is 1048 Fifth Avenue located within the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. This is a French classic style mansion designed by Carrer and Hastings and built in 1912 to 14. The application is to expand existing visible rooftop mechanical equipment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Timothy Shaw, Preservation Staff. 1048 Fifth Avenue is located at the, um, sorry, located at the, sorry, southeast corner of Fifth Avenue and 86th Street within the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. The application is for the installation of, um, new HVAC equipment in a room within, uh, within a new louvered enclosure adjacent to an existing mechanic room. Please note that the existing mechanical room seen here from the street was approved under certificate of appropriateness 986373 issued in June of 1998 and amended, uh, in December of 2000. Wanda Wilmore, the architect, will present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Wanda Wilmore. I'm here, uh, on behalf of our clients, Aneuia Gallery and several architects to, uh, present an extension, uh, to, well, to the existing, there's an existing enclosure here for mechanical equipment on the roof. And our proposal is to maintain the character of the louvered enclosure and extend it to, uh, to house additional mechanical equipment that's required at this time. When we completed the, uh, renovation back in 2000, it's now been 15 years, so the equipment now needs a little bit of an upgrade. There's also a capacity, uh, requirement with the demands of the, of the gallery and the public. Uh, they, they can't disrupt operations and so it's really a, a need, uh, request for the installation of this new, uh, equipment. The intention is to maintain, so here, this area is the proposed extension. The limit of the existing, uh, envelope is, this is the roof. Sorry, the, the graphics are not clear here, but it's about, it's just under 200 square feet that we're adding on rooftop. And again, just maintaining the character of what's there. This image shows you here, this line right there. This is the existing to the right-hand side. To the left is the addition. This is the view from, uh, Fifth Avenue. And this, these two images are more detail of what's existing here. Here's an exit door onto the roof. And now the louvered enclosure seeks to unify the existing vocabulary that's there and basically creating an enclosure where that door is now. So the, the, the access and the movement through and to the roof would be maintained. This is the proposed extension. This is the existing, again, different view here, different vantage point, existing and This is the view from, uh, the, the other street from, uh, 85th Street. You can barely make out, I mean, what really stands out here more than anything is the, the, uh, 10, 1050, uh, Fifth Avenue. There is a, an exterior stair canopy here that is still maintained and just tiny bit of the enclosure right there.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Questions? Elizabeth Fagan?
Pardon me?
Yes. Sorry, we're taking public testimony. Elizabeth Fagan.
Hi, Elizabeth Fagan with Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. Uh, although we are sympathetic to the Aneuia Gallery's need to preserve their collection through temperature regulation, the Preservation Committee at Friends believes that this proposed rooftop addition is far too large and visible from both the street and Central Park. The existing bulkhead is already an unsightly utilitarian addition and the proposed enlargement of this bulkhead further detracts from this beautiful career in Hastings' work, one of the most, one of the finest mansions along Fifth Avenue. The current lockup atop the building shows that the extended length and mass of the addition will overwhelm the building's distinctive mansard roof and the gray louver walls are ill-mashed against the buil, the building's traditional materials. The Preservation Committee at Friends urges the commission to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the site? The Community Board Eight recommends approval of this application. All right, uh, do we have any questions for, for the applicants? Okay, we can close the hearing. Okay, comments? Are there alternatives? It seems not. I'm not sure there are alternatives to this because there's no other place to put it. You can ask the applicant, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There is no other place to put it. That's part of the problem. There is an existing, um, the canopy space on the fifth floor along with, with the rooftop, um, with this existing rooftop louver. It needs to have fresh air.
Yep.
So it's very difficult to put it in that, it's already a very compressed space and access is kind of a, uh, it's an issue. So we're finding ways on Fifth Floor to provide a better access to the equipment at that level. This particular piece of equipment has to be custom made in order to, I mean, there's a whole background that I can get into, but it's a custom-made piece of mechanical equipment. There's nothing on the shelf that really conforms to the space that they have there right now.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for the applicant? All right, um, comments? Yes, Dana?
Uh, well, I agree that it's very visible. On the other hand, I actually go to the gallery quite a bit and a, an amazing amount of people going there now, lines all the time. So clearly they have, uh, you know, a greater need than they had in the past for the, uh, for a new device and, uh, sorry.
I think that even though it's visible and that's unfortunate, but, um, but I think the issue is real, which is there's no other place to put it. The building occupies the entire footprint and there's an existing bulkhead already there and it just extends that and extends that away from, uh, from Fifth Avenue. And, uh, so I think it's probably the best spot they could have on the rooftop.
I agree.
So, um, and then it has the background of the taller buildings, which I think also to some degree can, um, mitigate the visibility. Okay, so if there are no issues, we can go to decision. Yes.
In the matter of 1048 Fifth Avenue.
In the matter of ten forty-eight Fifth Avenue, Metropolitan Museum Historic District, the application is to expand existing visible rooftop mechanical equipment, noting that the style, character, and style, scale, materials, and details of the building among the features which contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the bulkhead will be expanded to enclose mechanical equipment and access to the rooftop stair and elevator bulkheads, that the expanded bulkhead will align with and will not be any taller than the existing bulkhead to the west, that the construction expansion, expanded bulkhead will not result in damage to any significant architectural features of the building, that while the expanded bulkhead will be highly visible from East Eighty-sixth Street and from Fifth Avenue north of East Eighty-sixth Street, it will primarily be seen against the backdrop of taller buildings, which will therefore diminish the impact of visibility on the building below, and that the presence of the expanded bulkhead will not overwhelm the significant architectural features of the building or streetscape.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, last item of the day is item sixteen. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness of Manhattan DACA number seventeen-seven-seven-seven-zero. This is seven-eight-one Fifth Avenue, located within the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a Lemanesque and Neogothic-style hotel building designed by Schultz and Weaver and Kahn and built in nineteen-twenty-six-twenty-seven. The application is to install sidewalk planters.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Shabbat shavon, the Preservation Staff. The application before you is seven-eight-one Fifth Avenue, also known as the Sheri Neverland Hotel, which is located on the corner of East Fifty-Ninth Street, Upper East Side Historic District. The application is for the installation of modern planters along the sidewalk. You can see here a rendering, as well as underneath the existing canopy. The applicant is proposing to install square planters at each corner. The architect, David C. Hachison, is here to discuss the proposal.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm David Hachison. Hachison is a well-partners architect. I'm with Carla Berman Snyder, assisted on this. The proposal, as Michelle said, is to install movable, removable planters on the Fifth Avenue sidewalk at the Sheri Neverland. It's also DOT revocable consent permit. The picture of the building on the left, the layout of the planters, we'll get into in a minute, concrete planters shown here in two sizes. The entrance would have square, two-by-two planters at the corners of the canopy, and the area along the Fifth Avenue curve would have rectangular planters, longitude and linear rayed amidst other elements on that curve, which are streetlight, star clock, a traffic sign, another traffic sign, a trash receptacle, city trash receptacle. Views of the sidewalk. It's a twenty-two-foot wide sidewalk with a six-inch curve, spread rather wide, barren. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic, mostly during the day. These are views looking north, previous is looking south. At the entrance of the building, looking towards Plaza Hotel, with a clock foreground, another view. This is looking north, yes, to Central Park. And this is looking due south from just north of the building. This is a rendering of the planters deployed on the sidewalk. I'll just talk a little bit about the spacing. The DOT regulations require clearances from all these elements. So we chose essentially two-foot-four-by-four-foot planter with four-foot spacer to create rhythm in this stretch of sort of empty sidewalk, and then to flank the canopy with another of the same, and the same here for the clearance from the street lamp. And the first one is, starts it with a ten-foot setback from the quadrant, the pedestrian sidewalk quadrant at the corner. These were, these were put in place in this rhythm to allow porosity of pedestrians. Essentially, the traffic, which is very heavy here, the drop-off is really at the entrance of the building, and this stretch of curb tends to be black car or limo waiting areas. There's sporadic traffic, pedestrians that might enter a car along here, but very rarely the action's really here. And then two very busy intersections here, here and here. It's quite a simple proposal. Green planters to match the green Sheri color, which is the window master plan in the storefronts. They would be planted with American boxwood primarily. Could be a location for seasonal flowers, depending on the Sheri management. The height of the planter is thirty inches of concrete planter, and we figure about two feet of planting space, about forty-two inches high. The planters have somewhat of a taper, just to give it a little bit of shape and character. And that's the proposal. Thank you. To the next. Resolution of the Sheri. From the Sheri. These are the four, it's four feet, four feet clear, four feet, four feet clear and so forth. Thank you.
Okay, I just have a quick question. The choice of color was based on the frames within the building?
The choice of color, all the storefronts and windows in the building, the highlights of the building to the side are the Hartford green, was written in the window master plan. Sheri has used that to do sort of street facing work, mostly storefronts. It was selective. The purpose to have greenery in front of the building, we thought was appropriate to have a green box, to have a green.
And the box is made out of the, the material is concrete, so it's concrete tinted, green or just painted?
Painted concrete. If we wanted a planter, we would talk to the vendor about whether they pre-paint the color into the product or not, which I would recommend.
Why this now? What, I think I don't really understand why so many planters, and are there other examples on Fifth Avenue with planters all along the entire street face in front of a building that close to the street?
It's an effort to provide a significant amount of scenery. It's impossible to do in sidewalk planters here because there's a sidewalk. So this was the best available alternative approach, hence it would be a revocable consent permit with DOT and a landmarks approval.
Could you not plant trees? That's not.
Trees.
Oh, this is valid. Okay. Okay, this is valid.
It would be possible, yes. The idea actually was to keep the greenery below pedestrian scale visibility to the action.
Okay. All right. Are there other questions? There are few speakers on the side. Barbara Z.
Barbara Z. of the Historic Districts Council. While on first glance, these planters did not seem problematic, our committee ultimately felt that planters pushed out to the edge of the curb would be strange, especially in such a heavy pedestrian zone. Typically, planters like these are placed right up against a building. If a security barrier is desired here, masonry bollards, especially ones that are small in profile and thus less obstructive, would be preferable. Our committee was thinking it was a security issue, not an aesthetic one. But, thank you.
Elizabeth Fagan?
Hi, Elizabeth Fagan, Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. The proposed sidewalk planters at seven-eight-one Fifth Avenue are a welcome addition to the busy streetscape along Fifth Avenue and Fifty-Ninth Street. We appreciate the rhythmic placement of the proposed planters, as well as their dark-green color, which matches the master plan for the windows of the hotel. Overall, this application will beautify the sidewalk and echoes the elegance of the iconic Sheri Neverland Hotel. The Preservation Committee at Friends supports this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Board Eight recommends approval. Do we have any other questions for?
Yes, so to confirm, so this is not for security?
Not for security. It's for beautification, reinstating.
And for the reason it's concrete is?
So that they have enough mass to stay in place. Essentially, they're heavy. They weigh about six hundred pounds apiece. Anything to comment on?
Yes.
The circulation of the sidewalk, I'm sure everyone in the room has walked past this building. So the zone of the front of the canopy, the two brass poles, and the streetlight and the clock and the traffic signs creates a zone along the curb, which seemed obvious as a place to set up the positioning of planters. There's storefronts along the building. I'll let you see Chippewa United Restaurant and the closing store here, the medical vodka. And there's a lot of traffic that tends to walk along the side of the building, looking at the storefronts that are entering either Chippewa United entrance or Sheri Neverland or this store. So it seemed that the logical place to put elements was in this line along the curb, so as not to be an independent traffic.
And just, can you tell me what the height of the planters?
Yes, thirty inches to the top of the concrete, then two feet above that.
Is the green.
So it's about forty-two inches high. So there tended to be low scale, in the scale of the pedestrian.
Okay, yes. What the applicant's shown here is just greenery, obviously. Were you thinking of putting possibly, you know, more colorful displays, or is it, you know?
Flowers.
Flowers, in other words.
I think seasonal flowers is an obvious thing to do at certain times of year.
Okay.
Looking at this rendering, if I were to work on the building, I would recommend, I would support that. Add a little.
Thank you. All right, thank you. If there are no other questions, we can close the hearing. All right, comments? The Commissioner's fine with this? All right, I was going to make, I will support this. I just, I think my only concern is that sometimes these planters can look like barricades, and so that's why I was asking about the height and the color. But I think, well, the Commissioners are fine with this. I don't know. I can go ahead. I had a similar concern, just because it's a very congested area, of course, as everyone knows. And I agree that people do tend to walk aside of it because of the other impediments to walking there. I was going to ask, well, the Commissioner, I'll go with the green color because it seems that there's some support for that. Maybe, well, you were asking about trees. I actually, oh, yeah. Because I was thinking about something that was actually a little higher, but it didn't impede the view, you know? I mean, I don't know, but something like flowering, small trees or something, but I don't know. I guess we can see how it looks. I'm sorry?
Did we cover that?
Trees?
Did you mean plantings?
No, the type of plantings? I don't think so. Do we? We don't know. We could recommend. No. This requires a special permit. They have to go to ID.
Revocable consent.
Yes. So revocable consent means that it's not permanent. They can always revocable consent, basically. There, you know, issues of pedestrian volumes. It's just, it's a street issue.
Right, right.
Doesn't bother them. Okay. Sorry about that. All right. You have to read it then. Yes. Okay, good. All right, you can support this, and we understand, you know, grading of the city is a great thing, and so we like that.
Yes, of course. In the matter of seven-eight-one Fifth Avenue, the Upper East Side Historic District, the application is to install sidewalk planters. And I'll note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features which contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the installation of the proposed modern masonry planters at the sidewalk will not alter, eliminate, or conceal any significant architectural features of the building or the streetscape, that the material and design of the simple concrete planters harmonizes well with that, with the stone, the lower portion of the facade, that the concrete planters will blend with the paving and the sidewalk, and will establish a hierarchy between the planters at the sidewalk and the planters beneath the canopy, that the sidewalk's approximately twenty-two and a half inches wide, twenty-two and a half inches wide?
Feet.
Feet.
Wide.
No. Is it? No? Twenty-two feet wide?
Two feet.
Twenty-two feet, six inches, I'm sorry, wide. Therefore, two foot, four inches wide planters will not crowd the streetscape, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the building or the Upper East Side Historic District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Because application's approved. Thank you. The slight.